All right, we are back. Thank you very much for your patience during that technical difficulties over at City Hall. Kristin, I just made you the host, so you can now share your screen.
It does look like I can share screen now, so never ready.
All right, we're, we're ready for you, so you can go ahead and share your screen and then once you pull down your presentation after, if you can just reassign the role back to me, thank you. All right, we see the, yeah, we see the presentation, you're good to go.
Excellent, then I will turn it over to Director Mitchell.
Yes, good afternoon Chairman Schleifer and members of the Rules Legislative Oversight Committee. Again, my name is Jason Mitchell. I'm the Director of the Department of Public Works. First, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to inform the public of our change in our recycling program and for providing an opportunity for us to tell our story. As you know, the women and men of the Solid Waste Bureau have been working extremely hard during this pandemic to provide essential services to Baltimore City. Core to the services is the collection of municipal trash and recycling. In addition, the Bureau of Solid Waste provides a host of other critical services to include street sweeping, snow removal, boat trash, graffiti, dirty streets and alleys, rat abatement, vacant property management, corner park can collection, waterway cleaning, and seasonal service to include Christmas tree removal and yard waste collections, and a host of other services. We do all this work with our current staffing levels on and around 610 individuals. My commitment as your Director of Public Works is to ensure we meet the needs of the Baltimore citizens, ensure that our staff have the tools to do their job, create a safe, healthy, and inviting city to ensure those living and visiting Baltimore have a good and welcome, welcoming experience. As we move forward with this presentation, our Acting Chief of the Bureau of Solid Waste, Ms. Yvonne Moore Jackson, will speak to what our crews have been facing, what they are accomplished, what they have accomplished under extreme conditions, and how we are looking to stabilize our municipal waste services for city residents. I will hand this presentation off to Yvonne to present this critical information, and then I will conclude the presentation at the end. Again, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you Chairman Schleifer and Honorable Members of the Committee. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss challenges and updates on trash and recycling collection. First, I would like to recognize our hardworking employees who have been going out every day in below freezing temperatures, ice and snow, to ensure we can provide residents with trash and recycling collection and other essential solid waste services. These everyday heroes are working in one of the top 10 most dangerous jobs, and they deserve our thanks and respect. Through challenges of the past two years, and while we continue to deal with the pandemic, our employees have consistently provided trash and recycling collection. They were unable to stay home or telework while most of the world was shut down. We are proud of the essential services we provide, and I'm thankful to our essential workers. Routine Services manages a total of 260 routes per week of curbside collection. Each route is managed by one crew, which consists of one driver and two labors. As you know, trash and recycling collection in Baltimore area is labor intensive. Having specific numbers of staff reporting is essential for providing the service. The chart on this slide shows the number of drivers and labors needed each day to service trash and recycling collection. At a minimum, the division requires 67 CDL drivers and 134 labors to manage all routes on a daily basis. When short on labors and drivers, recycling crews assist with trash collection. Unfortunately, Routine Services experienced challenges prior to the COVID-19, and these short and long-term challenges became exasperated by COVID-19. Our short-term challenges with the recent COVID surge has spread quickly throughout operations, resulting in severe staffing shortages. Over a seven-day period during the holidays, the Bureau of Solid Waste averages 228 employees on leave, with a peak of 340 employees on leave on December 30th. In addition to maintaining solid waste services, the Bureau of Solid Waste supported snow operations completing 22 snow routes during inclement weather. This support pulls off staff from our solid waste operations to provide safe driving conditions for residents and visitors. We have reached out to contractors that have assisted in past, but many are unable to help with collections since they are facing the same staffing problems as we are in the city. Some of our long-term challenges. While DPW is committed to bringing equitable recycling options to Baltimore households, the city's Sustainability Plan and DPW Less Waste Better Baltimore Plan recommended providing recycling carts to every household. DPW succeeded in securing a $3 million investment from the Recycling Partnership and a $3 million investment from the Closed Lea Partners Infrastructure Fund in order to reach this goal. To date, DPW has delivered over 131,000 recycling carts to city households. These carts provide every household with an easy access to recycling. However, these carts do increase the amount of recycling that crews collect. Despite the increased recycling and the decreased staff level, the city has not suspended its recycling services for residents. We have overcome many hurdles during the pandemic and continue to provide other solid waste operations in addition to keeping trash and recycling operations going. We know that we are not alone in staffing challenges as a result of the Omicron surge. Baltimore's waste collection challenges, particularly worker shortages, are reflected in other cities across the US. This slide lists a few major cities that are experiencing staffing shortages, but there are many other cities, counties, and private sector companies that have been short-staffed in the past month. The Solid Waste Association of North America, OSWANA, has sent a letter to the committee explaining how solid waste operations have been impacted across the country. 68% of our solid waste employees have been vaccinated. There have been a significant increase in positive cases in the last month and a half. DPW employees have been testing positive at an alarming rate since the beginning of December. There was a total of 104 positive COVID cases in 2021, and half of those cases, 50 cases, occurred in December. For each one positive case, there are two to six employees isolating due to exposure. The Bureau of Solid Waste is taking precautions to protect workers from COVID, including a mask mandate, social distancing, sanitizing facilities and vehicles, promoting COVID testing and vaccination sites, and setting up a DPW COVID test site for vaccinated employees. Employees that are dealing with emotional trauma due to the pandemic are encouraged to use the Employees Assistance Program. The recent COVID surge has spread quickly throughout operations, resulting in severe staffing shortages. In this graph, the yellow shows the number of Routine Services drivers and labors present, and the gray shows the number of employees on leave, and the red line shows the minimum number of employees required to service routes. In the Routine Services Division, there were an average of 91 employees on leave during the two-week period. During this period, the division did not meet the minimum employees required to service all routes, which is 67 drivers and 134 labors. And again, a crew consists of one labor and two drivers, I'm sorry, one driver and two labors. Due to insufficient daily staffing levels, some recycling routes have been delayed and missed. Trash routes have been a priority and have not been missed. Employees are reassigned from recycling routes and other solid waste services to assist with trash collection. There is a learning curve for these reassigned crews. Drivers may be unfamiliar with the equipment and specifics of the operation. On an average day, we have 22 recycling routes. At the peak of staff absences, DPW was only able to staff 11 of those routes. Over the past month, missed and delayed Routine Services routes have been communicated to residents via 311, real-time updates on our Public Works website, as well as social media. The industry standard for missed routes per week is 2% of routes. The department has done a good job at meeting and exceeding this standard in the past months. This is a summary of the regular trash and recycling weekly schedule. It takes a full team of Routine Services staff to service all of the trash and recycling across Baltimore. Thursdays are our busiest days, and there are 22 recycling routes to complete and a total of 67 routes, which includes trash. A switch to bi-weekly recycling collection will help us stabilize operation and ensure consistent, predictable, and sustainable services for residents. As you can see in this chart, the new schedule will decrease the number of crews needed on a daily basis. The busiest day will have 11 recycling routes instead of 22, which means that 11 fewer crews are needed. Beginning next week, January 18, 2022, we will move to the bi-weekly collection for recycling using an alternating A and B cycle system for curbside recycling collection services. For the northeast and northwest area of the city, north of North Avenue, neighborhoods will be Week A of the alternating schedule, which will start January 18, and the following collection will be February 1 through 4. The southeast and southwest portion of the city of North Avenue will be Week B, and that will start January 25, and their following collection will be February 8. It's critically important to note that these modified services for recycling do not impact trash collection, which will remain the same. To help navigate through the recycling modifications, residents can visit DPW's new online map that shows their recycling day and whether the address is on an A or B cycle. Residents' recycling day will not change with these modifications. For example, if a resident typically recycles recycling collection day is on Thursday, it will remain on Thursday with the new schedule, and collection will occur bi-weekly. Again, this is just for recycling. The recycling day map allows residents to look up their recycling collection day by address or zone of the city, as well as by council district. These layers are listed next to the map on the website. Residents can check the box next to the layer they wish to view. We are using many methods to share information on the modified schedule listed here. As we begin the bi-weekly collection next week, we will continue to increase outreach to make sure residents are aware of their recycling schedule. Press releases, social media, radio spots, mailers, and DPW website will share the information in addition to outreach through community associations and other groups. As we remind residents of the modified schedule, it's critical that we share information on what materials are recycled. We want to make sure that the recycling carts are used for recycling only to reduce contamination. DPW has several sources to help residents recycle waste. The website has a flyer in English and Spanish, and the Recycle Right webpage allows residents to look up various items to determine whether they are recycled. Most importantly, we ask that recyclables be placed in the loose cart and not in plastic bags. We are planning additional outreach in the coming months to share this information. Moving forward, immediate solutions to the short-term staffing issues include the modification to the recycling collection schedule, creation of a recycling route map, outreach to staffing agencies and haulers, and the possible creation of recycling community drop-off centers. We will continue to work with HR and the Mayor's Office of Employment to bring on more employees. We are continuing our in-house CDL program and are working to improve recruitment and retention. I'm proud to share that we have graduated six staff members over the last two months from our CDL training program. We are also in contact with existing contractors and soliciting additional contractors to assist with routes. DPW understand how important recycling is to waste aversion and is committed to doing everything possible to retain curbside recycling collection. While many municipalities have completely suspended recycling collections, DPW has chosen to maintain recycling services to further Mayor Scott's vision of moving Baltimore City toward a zero-waste initiative. Thank you for listening, and Director Mitchell will share his closing remarks.
Yes, thank you, Yvonne, for that presentation. And as you heard, the men and women of Public Works is doing an excellent job under extreme conditions. I am truly proud of all of our DPW workers that is doing work every day for Baltimore. I'm glad to have this committee's support, but I want to take a moment to tell the story of our solid waste workers. Like doctors and lawyers, like doctors and nurses, firefighters and police officers, our solid waste crews are truly essential frontline workers, and they've been outstanding in navigating all the challenges this pandemic has presented to us over the last two months and two years. We must continue to exercise compassion for all of our frontline workers. But before we had a vaccine, our adequate testing, these employees showed up every day. Many city employees have been teleworking this entire time. This hearing is virtual, and we have the privilege of doing it from our homes. But the Bureau of Solid Waste continues to show up and report to duty every day, rain or shine, or snow, Monday through Saturday for Baltimore City. While the city was telling their people to stay home for weeks and limit their time outside, our crews continue to show up for Baltimore. And with that, we must exercise compassion. Our Bureau of Solid Waste staff have had two of their friends murdered and killed over the last year. They have a couple of friends in the hospital fighting for their lives. I was just in the university speaking to a brother of one of our employees who is fighting for his life. We have lost others to COVID. This is traumatic for everyone, but especially our crews because they're dealing with this trauma and working through it, but still show up to work every day to provide essential service, and they still show up for Baltimore, and we must exercise compassion. In my first week on the job and speaking with the Bureau of Solid Waste staff, I was made aware of many trucks that doesn't have air conditioning. Staff have been working under extreme conditions, and they still show up to work. And a few workers in September, when we had a heat wave, some of our staff had heat-related health challenges because of no air conditioning in their vehicle, and they still showed up for Baltimore, and with that, we must exercise compassion. Just this morning, our staff had to stand in 20-degree weather as they received their daily assignments because our facilities are not large enough to have proper ready rooms, and many have to sit in their vehicles to either stay warm in the winter or cool in the summers, but they still show up for Baltimore, and with that, we must exercise some level of compassion. Some of our facilities don't have adequate lockers or restrooms for our female workforce. Many of our facilities don't have requisite number of lockers for staff. Restrooms facilities are adequate, at best for our sites. After a 10- to 16-hour work week, our work day, many of our crews do not have showers to clean themselves before they return home to their loved ones, but they still show up for Baltimore, and with that, we must exercise compassion. I wanted to take this time to humanize our team and the men and women of DPW as they are experiencing something that is real. You are experiencing something that is real. They are our colleagues, they are our neighbors, they are our friends, they are our family, and we must remember that when we think about these services. My job as a new Director of DPW is to improve our processes, our programs, and to provide support from that far staff. And I'm glad to have the support of this administration, and this is the main reason why they invited me to come to Baltimore, to be the DPW Director, to address these long outstanding matters. I appreciate each and every person on this committee for your support of DPW, for fighting for higher wages for DPW employees. I standing by our employees and providing something as simple as lunch are just saying a few kind words. Your leadership and understanding is much appreciated by DPW and our team. This is one of the most dangerous jobs in the labor market, and I appreciate, I thank, and I applaud the work of everyone in DPW. I am proud to stand hand in hand with our team in DPW, and as Director, I'm excited to tell the story of a solid waste worker. COVID-19 is real, it's taken a toll on all of our employees and everyone nationally, and we must recognize that, and we must talk and treat each other with fairness, dignity, and respect. Again, I thank you for this opportunity to tell our story, to showcase the work of the men and women of DPW, and to continue to articulate our beliefs in serving this beautiful city we call Baltimore. From the famous words of Henry Ford, he said, and I quote, "If everyone is moving forward together, their success takes care of itself." And with that, we must do this together as a team, as a city, along with our policymakers and our public, to make and move DPW forward. I am and always will be DPW proud. And again, I thank you Chairman Schleifer and members of this Rules Legislative Oversight Committee for everything that you have done and supported DPW, and me and my team is here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
All right, Kristin, if you can please take down the presentation, thank you very much for that. Okay, and Director, thank you for your comments, and Yvonne, thank you for that presentation. You know, everything that you just spoke so passionately about really sums up my very first meeting with you when I went through and discussed with you all the efforts that have been in place that I myself has been spearheading, I partnered with Councilman Cohen on some of those efforts, and we demanded of DPW, and we've been continuing to demand of DPW to take care of those hard-working men and women, and when you talk about even something as small as bringing a meal to them, that sums up the work that we've been doing, and this council has been behind those men and women of the department. When it came time, when I called for raises for all those workers, this council supported that, this council supported bonuses for those workers. What we haven't seen has been the support from DPW leadership towards those workers, and even things, kind gestures, like bringing a meal to those workers. I, out of my own pocket, have brought meals to those workers. Councilman Cohen, out of his own pocket, has brought meals to those workers. What I don't see, when I go down to these yards, which I do frequently, is seeing DPW leadership bringing meals to these workers, talking to these workers, finding out their needs of these workers. I've done that, my colleagues have done that, and that's how we know the challenges that they face, which is why we've put forth solutions and successfully had those solutions put in place. So we understand that, and that is why I opened up this hearing with thanking those workers because they do work under the most extreme conditions, and they don't feel supported. And frankly, you know, this presentation that you guys presented, for the most part, really sums up the problem here, is that it just seems that leadership has been out of touch with reality. And I'm surprised to hear when we say that, you know, the department has been doing a good job. I didn't hear an apology to the employees who have been run ragged during this situation. I didn't hear an apology to the citizens of Baltimore who were told who were told many times to bring out their trash recycling and then had to drag it back in, we're talking about seniors, we're talking about other people in the community who aren't physically well, and it's taken a toll on them, and the pollution that it's taken on our environment, and then every other ramification with what we've been going through for the past few weeks. I did not hear in this presentation an acknowledgement of that, and what I heard was an acknowledgement that, oh, there's issues other places. We shouldn't strive to be like other places, we should strive to be the best. And that's what I'm aiming to, and that's what this committee is aiming to, and that's what the department should be aiming to. And so the citizens of Baltimore are not happy, the employees who are out there working until 10:00, 11:00 at night, they're not happy, and it seems that leadership has failed to acknowledge that. And so I'm going to ask my first few questions, and then I'm going to move on to other members of the committee for their questions. So my first question for you is I emailed you last week a list of basic questions that I intended to ask at this hearing. Have you had a chance to put answers in writing to those questions?
I think you have the answers in this presentation to many of those questions. We didn't answer those questions, please feel free to ax them.
Yeah, the presentation did not answer those questions. In fact, the presentation is actually a little confusing because it mentions different metrics, but it doesn't actually talk specifically to the metrics that we're looking at for this hearing. It's specifically related to curbside collections, and so when we talk about, you know, at the peak, 300 employees out of 610 employees were on leave on a specific date, we're talking about here the specific employees involved in working on curbside collection. We're not talking about throughout the entire agency or even the entire Solid Waste Bureau and other functions. And so most of those questions weren't answered, but I'm happy to ask them today. And so my first question. And so um, my first question um, will be uh, how, I'll start simple. How many days are employees quarantining for?
We follow the, uh, the, the health department's guidelines. And so. For us, you know, as, as depending on the issue and depending on the circumstance with said employees. Um, after they had tech, testing and speak with their medical doctors, that can vary. And so. When we have someone that tests positive, we send them to testing with the health department. The health department provides. But Public Works staff supervisors and managers with a letter prescribing exactly what we do. So what we do is we follow the health department guidelines that they provide to us in writing. And depending on the person's medical condition, whether they're symptomatic or not. We, we, we follow the guidelines as prescribed when the health department provides us with letters to our staff.
I'm happy to get more specific. Um, in your slide uh, that said COVID summary, it said for every one positive case. There are two to six employees in isolation over city protocol. Now, just to be clear with this presentation um, and outlining when people have been positive. Um, when you talk about two to four, two to six people for every positive case in isolation. Your slide also says that just under sixty-eight percent of your employees are vaccinated. Are employees, are employees isolating and quarantining at home because of possible exposure. Um, to other employees in the bureau who have tested positive even though they are vaccinated. So are vaccinated, fully vaccinated employees at home quarantining without symptoms and simply just because they were in contact with somebody who tested positive?
They are following the guidelines of the health department.
Okay. What is the guidelines of the health department for somebody who um, is in contact with somebody who tests positive?
I am not the health expert here. I would, I would defer that question to someone here that may be from the head of health department. My job is to run the Department of Public Works and I want to make sure I leave the, the descriptive responses. Related to the rules and regulation around COVID pandemic. And any positive test to the professionals within the health department. What we do with DPW and I didn't, I do want to stress. Is that when our people are, are faced number one with close contact, but also two with positive, positive tests. We follow the guidelines as prescribed with the health department.
Okay. What is the guidelines? If somebody tests, if, if somebody is in contact with somebody who tested positive. So if my, if a coworker. And, and if, if, let's say there's, let, let's talk about. A truck. A truck has a driver, two laborers on the back. If one of those people tests positive. Obviously, they have to be home. They have to, they have to quarantine. They have to get themselves better, most importantly. The other two employees are both fully vaccinated. Are they coming to work the next day or are they quarantining?
We provide the list of close contacts uh, to the health department. The health department reached out to those employees and depending on their circumstances, they provide us with a prescription on how we move forward.
So every single time somebody tests positive in the agency, these two to six people who go into isolation. They're only going into isolation once the health department tells you?
I think since the pandemic, and I could be wrong. And so I would defer the, the correct answer to, to any health professional that's on, on the call. But since the pandemic, when someone tests positive and they've been engaged or been in close contact, there has been a process to do that. It has started since the beginning of the pandemic and it continues today. And we continue to follow those process and procedures. And we do not do anything outside those rules and, and regulations. So again, I, I state that you, for, for more detail. You know, we, let's, let's bring our health professionals in to, 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 to speak to, to that. But I tell you, we one hundred percent follow the guidelines and the prescribed, written prescriptions as outlined to us from the health department.
Are employees paid when they're out quarantining because of possible exposure? Are they at home being paid?
There, there is a HR uh, directive around employees being out on uh. On leave for COVID related challenges and we, we follow that guideline.
Are they being paid when they are home quarantining because of possible exposure? Yes or no?
My understanding that there's some type of sick or other alternative leave for people that are out. But that's prescribed by the Human Resources Department. That's a, that's administrative directive. And we follow it, Council, uh, Chairperson. And we will not do anything other than follow the rules and regulations. As prescribed by our administrative instructions, by our rules and regulations. And by our health department and we, and, and we will, will continue to do that. And we thank you for supporting us and being able to make sure that we meet those and follow those guidelines.
Director, you know, this, this is very concerning for me. What's concerning for me is that I would say the most important question when you're dealing with a staffing crisis is to know who's out. Why are they out and when are they coming back? Now, I am not talking at all about employees who test positive for COVID and are out sick. And their conditions vary. I'm, let, let's put them aside for a second. I am not talking about those people. Uh, they need to get better. What I'm talking about is the specific guidance as an agency director. You, we need to know what you, when you tell, when you give us a presentation and you tell us. That on a single day, you can have three hundred and forty out of six hundred and ten employees, fifty-five percent of, of that bureau out. When, when you give us a staggering number like that, but then we also have the number of how many have tested positive, which is obviously hundreds of people less. That tells us, and, and you've told me directly that people, that hundreds of people are out. And have been out because they're quarantining because of possible exposure. This presentation also has explained to us. That just under seventy percent, and I'm glad to see the numbers going up and I'm happy to help with that as well. But close to seventy percent of the agency is vaccinated. The city policy, uh, since you guys don't have it handy, I will tell you is that if you are fully vaccinated. If you come in contact with somebody who tested positive, if you were in close contact, if you are not symptomatic. You don't need to be quarantining. And so what you're telling me and what you're telling this committee today is that there are hundreds of people who are out because of contact. Who are fully vaccinated. Who are being paid to not be at work. And they're supposed to be at work according to city guidelines and city guidance. And the health directive of the city. And what's the most concerning to me is that in this agency, there's that, that, that you don't have an answer for me. As to what the most basic policy that we all know already. And therefore, I, I, I'd have to ask you, do you guys have a spreadsheet? Of, and I'm not asking for employees' names. I'm not asking for their employee number. I'm not asking for. Do you guys have a spreadsheet that lists off each employee? When they're out, when they went out, why they went out, and when they're scheduled to be back?
So yeah, so that, that was a lot. So I'll, I'll try to answer it. I just want to say those people are people and the workers of DPW. I just want to name them, not just those people, but as the women, women and women of DPW. Secondly, my job is to protect the health and safety of everyone within this department. And I take that seriously. And in doing that, my job is to provide, provided the, 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 the processes. As it comes from the health department and follow them. And so for us, we do follow them. As prescribed in this presentation, you see the numbers of staff out. Almost at December thirtieth, almost three hundred and fifty employees. That's staggering. And, and, and in doing that and understanding that those numbers are presented because we do look at the numbers. We do have the numbers of people out. That's why we are able to present the data that you have here today. Now, if you would like to know more about that, depending on what we can provide from a personnel standpoint, we will be able to share. The reason why you have the numbers presented before you, and the reason why we are able to share that number because we do try. So I do want to thank you and really let you know that our job is to follow the CD, the, the C, the CDC. And the local health commissions and department guidelines, and I will continue to do that.
Okay, Director, I, I understand that these numbers, when you, when you say in a single given day, three hundred and forty people. In that one bureau out of six hundred and ten, fifty-five percent are out. If we take every single person that you guys told us has tested positive in that month, every single one of them, okay? And we add on the, on every single person in that bureau that's not vaccinated. You're still not at that number. So what that tells me is that you, we, we keep referring back and certainly COVID is an issue. And it's the, it's the primary issue and I, and I, I'm not demeaning that. It's a, it's an issue across the board. In every agency, in every business, all across the country. I get that. What I'm talking about is management and minimizing the impact on the citizens of Baltimore. And right now, what I see is a mathematical impossibility. It is impossible. That these outages and these many people are out during, during a day like that. And it's all, and this is COVID related. And that you guys are following the policy, the five day policy, and I am gravely concerned and hopefully. Um, thi- this will be reported back to the mayor directly. That we, that, that a simple questions such as the quarantining policy and understanding that, that, that is the most important thing. No other agency, fire, police, they would never get away with, with not having this information. To know when people are leaving, when they're coming back. And I bet you, if we looked at the line by line and employee by employee. We will see that this issue, there is a big management issue. And clearly people are out, large volumes of people are out on days like the ones you listed. For reasons other than COVID. And it could be vacations. It could be a whole variety of other factors. But the, but the fact is, is that it has not been managed correctly. And I've taken enough time on that, but, but I am, I, I cannot express how concerned I am. That, but how, how, it doesn't seem like leadership is really taking this seriously. Because I know some members in leadership were away for, for weeks at a time while this crisis was going on. And so I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues just because I haven't been so fair in giving everybody the opportunity to ask questions. So. I'm going to go in order that I see my colleagues and then I'll come back to my remaining questions.
And I want, and I want to thank you. As you know, this is not a DPW issue. This pandemic and what's going on currently is happening on a national stage, stage. At the national level, the president just issued mandatory testing for five hundred million Americans. Why? Because this is a national issue. And it's DPW is not protected from the virus. We're experiencing it. It's tough. Our people are going through a lot. Some people are, are, are experiencing more symptoms than others. And they may have to be out or not. But again, we follow those guidelines. As you can see, other major municipalities are struggling with the volume of service. I say to DPW manage, I applaud you for coming up with this creative ideas. For under extreme staffing challenges, picking up municipal waste every single day. Up until this new variant, picking up recycling every single day. I applaud them. And I applaud the work that they're doing. And I applaud and have the compassion for the people that are doing it. And I also think, because I can tell you over the last few weeks. Even walking out of my home and seeing my neighbors, they have sent emails thanking us for doing great work with their trash. They have sent emails being patient and understanding. And I hope and continue that this body continues to show that level of compassion. Support because in order for us to move forward, in order for these employees to have. The, 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 the move, the boost to get up and do this every day under these extreme circumstances, we need your leadership.
All right, Director.
We need your love and we need your attention. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. And, and like I said in my opening statement, um, the, the twelve different missed collections. Um, that have occurred over the past six months in my district alone. There's been a variety of excuses. And a lot of those were when positivity rates were the lowest they were in throughout this entire pandemic. So let's please just stick to the data, stick to the numbers, and let's stick to the facts. And so Councilman Cohen, you're the first up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, Director and colleagues and DPW staff. Um, and I do want to echo my colleagues' assertion and yours as well, Director, that. Um, the folks who are on the front lines of this pandemic, our sanitation workers are heroes. Um, those men, women, and people have been at this job under some of the most horrific duress. Um, that I could even imagine. Um, it is one of the most dangerous jobs. It's why Councilman Schleifer and I fought for about four months to get folks a pay raise, to get them full-time work, to get them benefits. Um, you know, everyone in this city owes a debt of gratitude to our frontline workers. That said, I think the concern for me, and I believe most of my colleagues, is around communication. Um, and I, I gotta be honest, the fact that we are giving out recycling bins. While we can't get the basics of recycling right, to me is really troubling. I look at so many of my neighborhoods where the deployment of the recycling bins was incomplete. Or sloppy at best. I look at constituents who have been consistently frustrated, who are saying to me. Why am I getting this recycling bin if they're not coming in several weeks to come get anything out of it? Um, there's something ironic about us passing out these bins, and I know that preceded you, but. While we're struggling to do basic operations. Um, another frustration, why aren't we picking up for schools anymore? We're asking our young people to go green and be part of green teams. And yet we've stopped picking up recycling for our schools. I had a principal tell me he has a mound of cardboard that is just sitting there. He's ended up paying five hundred bucks out of his own pocket several times to come and get it picked up. There was no communication to him or any of the other school leaders. They just found themselves. Uh, not able to get the recycling. And I've brought this to your staff's attention several times. Um, I think it sends a profoundly bad message when we tell our kids to go green and recycle. And yet we fail to pick up recycling from their school. So my question is. Can we commit to returning to picking up recycling from schools?
I, I will defer that question to uh. Uh, Yvonne Moore Jackson, um, regarding school pickups.
Yes, at this time, and, and we, we have been communicating with the school system regarding recycling. And inform them at this time, we just don't have the resources to collect school recycling. Right now, our recycling, our recycling crews are focused on residential. And also our dumpster collections are focused on residential. Uh, and condo collection of uh, trash and recycling. So we, we just don't have the resources to do it right now. And we have communicated with them. We've had plenty of meetings about it.
No, and, and I appreciate the constraints that we're under and fully understand that. Uh, COVID has caused huge problems for everybody. But there doesn't seem to have been any real plan or transition for the school system in particular. I mean, leaving aside residential for a moment and all of the challenges there, just on our schools, like we're telling kids, go green. Recycle, don't litter, all these messages, yet we've done just the opposite. And it feels like there was no. Um, no communication to any of us, no, no real communication with the school system, maybe now, but I can tell you. I had, you know, multiple principals reach out and say. Inform me that we were no longer picking up recycling. And it is incredibly frustrating and I'm hoping. I mean, my request for you all is that we get that service going again, because I think it's incredibly important as a value statement for our city. My second question is, why are we deploying the new recycle bins? While we're in the midst of our, our inability to collect recycling on a weekly basis? And I want to caveat that by saying, I'm all for the bins. I think it's an important. Thing for us to really dig in on zero waste. But the timing feels um, almost like a slap in the face to a lot of residents.
I thank you uh, for that question, Councilmember. As you know, the rollout of the, the recycling being started a few months ago. Prior to this pandemic and this wave that we're seeing just recently hitting us. And unfortunately, we didn't see it coming. I, this new wave, this new variant, I don't think the nation's seen it coming. And so uh, you know, we still have contractors that are contracted to roll out those blue bins, but I think it's great timing. And the reason why I say this great timing is because the bins are bigger. They're bigger than the, the yellow containers. They provide more, more, more gallons for the, for recycling. For cardboard, for plastics, for aluminums to be able to be put on, uh, put and restored at their homes, but also placed. and restored at their homes, but also placed on the curbside. In addition to that, we are able to, when recycling, everybody put a a limited amount of recycling out on the curb, as you know. And with that, we still want our residents to recycle and not not put those recyclers in their in their green garbage trash can. So I think it's not only great for Baltimore in short term. Our vision for a less waste, better Baltimore goes out a decades because we're looking at this long term. So this is a a tough time that no one predicted. But I think when we look at this thing bigger, right, we look at it over decades, this is the transition on how we continue to move the mayor's plan for a zero zero waste solution. So I think even though there may be always a little bump along the way to get to what we want, I think this is a great job and a great opportunity to get us there. So in so many different ways, it's good and this is a positive.
Um, again, appreciate sort of the long-term vision a- around this. It just becomes incredibly frustrating when we're not doing the basics of recycling. And just to close, I guess I would again ask for better and improved communication from the agency. Way too many times I'm having residents calling me at all hours saying the recycling didn't get picked up, the trash didn't get picked up. Um, you know, communication has not been good and I'm really hoping to see a commitment to improving it. Um, again, thank you, Director. Um, thank you, Ms. Moore Jackson, and thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen.
Next on my screen, um, Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the uh committee members. Uh, and I see both sides of this, you know, my, the DPW is is near and dear to me, which every council member uh knows and um, just hoping and praying with the new direction of uh Mitchell that we can move forward in a in a in a better way. Uh, I know that I talked to many employees throughout the month, throughout the weeks, throughout the days and the nights uh where some have given me calls on wanting to quit because, you know, I feel like uh we, as the council, uh should have more jurisdiction on how we put monies in with other agencies. If old equipment, I've had old equipment over 20 years ago. Uh, as Mr. Mitchell mentioned early on, you know, the blood, sweat and tears that our men and women put out each and every day to make sure our city is clean, sometimes are uh spoken upon as if these men and women and people are the very same thing they pick up, trash. That's how some folks look at us. That's how some folks looked at me in the past. So what I'm asking is that we as a council, you know, push forth, you know, with the administration to put more funding into the Department of Public Works Solid Waste because of the fact that our men and women are underpaid, they are quitting, and we have a temporary agency that people feel like, why should I take the chance to go pick up trash for 15, $16 an hour? Whatever those wages are, I don't know for sure now. But they feel like, is it really worth me going out there to do this job as opposed to going home to give my family COVID? Our men and women are underpaid. It's time for us as a council to step up. And when I say step up, meaning go to the higher ups to demand that we make sure that the current administration is doing their job with funding the Department of Public Works Solid Waste. It's frustrating to me because I've been there for over 17 years and I've seen those conditions of the men and women when they come into work, not having to go to a locker room to change their clothes, not having the able ability to come back from work to take a shower. I've seen the frustration with mental health of men and women fighting behind those trucks, getting killed behind those trucks, getting incarcerated behind those trucks because of the mental health condition they're having to face with we, the public, want instant gratification when we, the public, don't at times see or feel what it is that these men and women and people go through each and every day behind those trucks. We pick up the debris that don't nobody want to touch, filth. And it's frustrating to me because of the fact that I know we all want to see it cleaner Baltimore, but in order for us to see it cleaner Baltimore, we as leaders of the city have to step up and give them what they need. It's frustrating when I hear a coworker, a past coworker come to me and say, Councilman, I can't even go get my COVID test done because of the fact that I reported that there's a relative of mine that had COVID-19, but I can't go nowhere else to get it done, meaning they can't even go to certain yards unless a supervisor allows them to go to certain yards to get the COVID-19 um test done, from my understanding. And then some of those individuals are not. Mr. Mitchell, because I'm not sure, but there's some of them are telling me they are not getting paid when they're staying home. Some of them are actually use their own time when they're staying home and some of them don't even have the time to use when they're out with COVID. So I don't know how true this is, but I'm asking that we dig deeper and look into those issues that are coming before me and probably many of my colleagues. So on that note, thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak. I feel the frustration on both ends. I hear it from our constituents each and every day. Tony, what are we going to do? What can you do? And a lot of times, things are not in our hands to do it. Many times our hands are tied, but I'm asking the current administration to please step up, give up because it's frustrating to not only us, but to the colleagues that we, the constituents that we represent. And thank you. That uh uh I really, you know, apologize for my uh my aggressive style of conversation, but it's frustrating when an individual who have been down there and know this is not nothing that's happened overnight, it has been frustrating due to COVID. This is just another challenge, but it's very, very frustrating that the men and women of DPW Solid Waste have to go through these conditions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And if um, and you and I have discussed this before and and um and if we can make Councilman Glover's uh statements and question a uh an action item for DPW to follow up with the committee on uh to let us know what is DPW and leadership going to be doing um to improve these conditions. Uh, we haven't seen any improved conditions at the yards, at least not the ones in my area. And so if you can follow up with us with a plan of what you're going to do to improve these conditions uh at at the locations all across the city and for these workers, and if the committee can get that in writing. Thank you. Councilman Glover, do you have any uh any other question or is that is that a good uh request for you?
That's cool, uh, Mr. Chair. I appreciate everything, but more importantly, like we're going to continue, guys, to lose workers to outside contractors that are paying our men and women and people way more money. At the end of the day, our families want to go to the Bahamas, just like us. We have no, as councilmen and women, as the administration, we are city workers, just like our colleagues that are behind solid waste in every other city agency. They want the same thing we want, better healthcare, better wages, better opportunity to live in a safe community. So what I'm saying is that we just need to take more time as a council, as an administration, to dig into this, to make sure that our men and women and people from those departments, from those agencies are getting the funds they need and the salaries they deserve to continue to do the things that we don't want to do, and that's deal with filth. And and that's just my frustration. That's my ask. Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, Miss Yvonne, and to my colleagues on the council, but please, let's just make it work. No more excuses. Let's just work until we get it done.
Thank you, uh, Councilman. Uh, next up on my screen, that's the Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and thank you, colleagues. I share the same sentiments of my colleagues. We want to make sure that our workers are in good conditions and I sat in on the um Capitol Budget Committee, uh, excuse me, Planning Commission the other day, and it does look like there's $10 million from DPW, DPW requested for facilities, um, which is a good first step and I appreciate that um you are doing that so that our men and women at the yards have better conditions. Certainly not going to be the end all and be all. There's going to be, need to be more money. But my question, and again, I want to uh make sure that it's clear, I'm I'm very concerned about this. Um, I just emailed um Chief Moore Jackson because I'm getting texts and emails as we speak about missed recycling for the last two weeks that we were promised will get picked up today. And um, I don't want to blame the workers. What I want to understand is what's happening with the communications because we were on a good roll. We would get, you know, service uh changes and we'd be able to send things out to our constituents, but I'm afraid to send anything out to my constituents because if I do, it's likely to be wrong. And that's not fair to the constituent. Um, it sets up expectations uh that we cannot um fulfill. And so I'm just curious what happened with how that how that broke down considerably this time around and, you know, I really uh, you know, thank um uh Chief Moore Jackson and um Director Ratchell and so many others that have picked up the pieces here. Um, but it's still very frustrating for our residents. Um, and again, I don't think that that's, I just don't understand what the breakdown is in the communications and if you could let us know, that would be wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. I, over the last three or four weeks, uh, as you know, uh, we just have experienced significant challenges in the, and in solid waste, those challenges are in real time, right? And so uh, for example, uh, we woke up today and we have more confirmed positive cases. Last night, we didn't know those things. So as those things are happening, operations are changing in real time. And so we admit, you know, the the communication has been a very big challenge because so much is changing so quickly and getting now to nearly 600,000 residents is 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 tough. Um, we're we're trying to reset ourselves and as you can see in this presentation and some of the mapping and routing and how we're getting the message out now and going forward to to be able to stabilize the last three weeks has been a very, very not big wear on on tear on our operations, but the great work that you know that our communication team has been doing, providing emails uh before routes and all the things that's been happening lately, updating the website, really communicating with 311. But this pen, this change in, such change in our operations has caused it to be very difficult to tech, to make those communications and things changing so hard. So we apologize, right? I apologize on behalf of the city. We we want to continue to improve those communications. And we will continue to make those improved. And as you can see with the rollout of our ABE shift, it was a citywide effort, right? And I have to really thank Yolanda Winkler for really helping and James Bentley for really helping us who are citywide, working with the school district, working with all city department, working with our administration who really pushes out to get those maps up in in a day or two, to make sure people knew their route. So there's a, there's a big effort. Communication is one of the toughest thing to do in an organization this size, not just for Baltimore City, but in the organization. And we're going to continue to try to improve.
Uh, just to follow up, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, Director, the um, you know, the other, the the piece has also broken down at 311. I just had a constituent text me saying, hey, 311 tells me that recycling's not coming today. And I know because I've talked with um, you know, Chief Moore Jackson that yes, recycling is coming. So it it's very confusing for the consumer and it's terrible for us because we're the ones trying to get the message out in a way to to manage expectations. So I mean, I'll I'll work that specific issue with Chief Moore Jackson, but the the main thing is that, you know, you know, we all have cell phones. You can text us and say, hey, somebody's coming. You know, I'm willing to go out there with a guy to try to take the rest of of my collections up because I know that now we're not even in regular routes. We're just trying to clean, we're trying to clean up. So anything that we can do is going to be important, but I just don't understand what's, you know, something must not be happening at the I don't know what level it is where we're not getting the information. Um, and so now as people are getting home from work, we're going to get all kinds of other texts and emails if they don't see the recycling picked up for the blocks because I sent out a whole list of all the different of the different places that we're supposed to be getting recycling today. Um, so you know, it's it's unfortunate that it's been a whole system breakdown here. And um, you know, we we hope and I'm hopeful that the, you know, every other week is going to work. Um, one of the big issues in my district also is that I have a very high recycling district, which actually means I don't have the blue bins. So the recycling is totally gross right now and um waiting another week is is going to be problematic. So I'm really hoping that we can um deal with that, but I'm just really curious as to, you know, what, i- is there somebody else I should be going to? I mean, you know, I I don't, I don't, I don't understand what's going on here.
No, thank you. Uh, we're going to continue to work with our partners in 311 and really ensure, we'll reach out and really ensure that message is tied and communicated well. Um, we have been working with them. Um, it's it's just been, as you can imagine, a lot of changes. And I think that's one of the reasons why, you know, with these, you know, challenges that we're facing and will continue to face as a department, as a nation, that's why we have this moving forward, the A B and C, A B shift. Why? Because we want to create consistent, reliable and sustainable services that's easier to communicate. And in this rapid change, this will be able to do that. We also are looking, as as you heard in the in the presentation, at optimizing our routes. Um, I came to Baltimore City and they have already began to work with our trash routes to oper- op- optimize it. As we roll out our last blue cart, we'll begin to optimize our now newly updated recycling routes. Um, this is great work. I did this work in the Bay Area about a decade ago and I'm glad to come and bring that knowledge and do that work here. And so with all those things, it will bring a better way to communicate with our customers, but also for them to see where our trucks are at out there on the road. And so I think that is great. And regarding cycling services today, our crews are still out. They have been working to eight, nine and 10 o'clock at night to be able to provide this service and they are still out doing, doing the great work of DPW for the citizens of Baltimore.
Uh, thank you. That's it for this round. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, thank you. Uh, next on my screen is Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and colleagues, uh, and also, uh, just wanted to uh send my thanks to uh the hardworking uh workers at DPW, um sanitation crews uh in particular, uh, that have been working diligently throughout the pandemic over the last uh two years. Um, and under some very difficult circumstances the entire time. Um, I mean, I had, I too had an opportunity to to go out with crews a few years back and actually did a shift on the truck uh with DPW workers. Um, and to, so I could get that firsthand experience of what it is like to actually do a trash shift um on the back of a truck. Um, and it was incredibly difficult. In fact, I will fully disclose, I didn't make it through the entire shift uh after tweaking my back, trying to lift the can that was, uh, had rainwater at the bottom of it. Uh, so I had to leave my shift early uh and and go home and and rest. Uh, but I would know, I know that I had the the privilege to be able to do that. Uh, a lot of these guys worked through uh injury, worked through rain. Um, and and in this pandemic, I understand that it's particularly difficult because there is no way to social distance inside the truck. Um, there is, there is, there is not six feet of space in that, in inside of those uh trucks and 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 so um I can only imagine um the impact that a airborne um uh that virus would have on their ability to to do this. And so I I know that these folks are working hard. I want to send my thanks to that. Um, I I will note that there, while while I do under, very much understanding of the impact of the reduction of service, I did have a couple of questions about the communication strategy as well. Um, in particular, um, work between uh agencies to to get the word out on on changing routes um in in other ways that we can improve communication, like as the agency explored uh using a similar, a system similar to what uh the Office of Emergency Management uses. Uh, there, they, obviously this wouldn't be an appropriate use of the Red Alert system, but other other tools in which we can There, they, obviously this wouldn't be an appropriate use of the Red Alert system, but other, other tools in which we can push out notifications. By geography or robocalls at the neighborhood level in which, you know, that system has the capability to do. Has the agency looked at other ways to get the word out? Because I, I would note that, you know, on our end, and I'll allow you to answer the question, on the council end, obviously I'm in frequent communication with agency staff. But without that type of tool, beyond sort of social media and email blasts. My constituents and even neighbors aren't, aren't getting it. And I would, I would note that even driving into my own neighborhood, I can kind of tell who's on the neighborhood listserv and who isn't, based on if they put their cans out or not. And so just trying to figure out what are some other tools that are being considered and can be implemented? As this pandemic isn't going to be ending anytime soon, we are in this and will be in this for the foreseeable future. And so with, are there additional ways in which we can communicate service changes? So that there, it lessens the blow on our constituents in real time?
Yeah, I'll start off and Yolanda would like to jump in, yes, I will. But yes, we are looking at that, right? Where, you know, one of the things that you have around disruption of services. Is there's many software platforms where you, where you can get a text, where you can get a robocall, where you can get an email very quickly. And you can do it by, by certain areas, right? So you can focus that message into a certain area so it doesn't have to be citywide. Similar to what the school district does with me almost every other day with my kids. They send messages around the COVID impacts, they send me an email, they send texts, they send calls. And so we are definitely looking at that. And then Yolanda has been doing some great work in getting us moving forward with our outreach and marketing and communication. And if I miss something, Yolanda, please, please jump in.
Good, good afternoon, Chairman and members of Baltimore City Council. So Director, you're right, and the answer, Councilmember, yes, we are looking at other options. And we're looking at other stakeholders and we're looking at all our partners. And so I was on a call, on a call today with a company that did robocalls for the health department. And so I met with them and so we're evaluating whether that's going to be feasible. Be mindful though, that in Baltimore City, most of the residents have abandoned their landlines. So we have a landline issue. Now, I do know that most of our seniors still have landlines. My mother still has a landline, I do not have a landline. And so we will be able to reach our seniors, we will be able to reach those who are at a disadvantage for one reason or another. And we're working on that, but the best way for us to reach anyone is all of us working together. The council, the administration, the Department of Public Works, all of the liaisons that James and I have engaged this week. And I know that the message is getting out because your, your aides have copied me on emails that they have sent out. That your, your constituents, our constituents have emailed me asking me questions about the map. And asking me to show them how to get into the map. So I know the communication is working. Now, as Director said, the, the, the work that our men and women have to do in sanitation. Number one, you all need to recognize that it's a work that no one else wants to do. None of us want to do that work. So they're doing a yeoman's job, just trying to keep up in a pandemic. And when they're sick, they're entitled to be home, quarantined, making sure they protect their family. And that should not be downplayed because they are human. The other part of this is communication tries to stand up how we are operating. When we are, when we are short staffed, things in terms of operations are changing rapidly. Are changing rapidly. My team works twenty-four hours, we don't sleep. We're on Facebook responding to complaints, we're responding to your complaints, we're responding to constituent complaints. Councilwoman Middleton, I can't tell you how many times I've responded to her and some of the others, others of you. So to say that communications is lacking, it's not lacking, we're dealing with a challenging time. It's challenging right now going through this pandemic and we are not alone. I want you to check the facts on that because we are not alone. I have family members in Anarundale County, they have not, they have fell back on picking up recycling. And yet you all get on this platform and you grandstand and you make us look like we're useless. And it's absolutely not fair. I'm going to stop here because I'm getting very emotional because I know how hard this department is working. I know when I came into this department two and a half years ago, when I could have retired, why I came back to Baltimore? To be a help to my city that I love and my entire family lives in. And I'm really upset as to how we have been treated, the comments that were made on WBAL today. It almost looked like us a significant racial divide in terms of some of the comments that are here. There needs to be more unity. And the way you all can help us is to advocate for us, to share, help us share the information. It's easy to point fingers.
Yeah, and if we can just stick with the facts, I mean, when collections are, are going to be missed, if we, we've discussed this, Director, you and I, even before the first time we met. When you were getting started, that if we find out the night before, the day before, we can tell our constituents. However, what we've seen on a daily basis recently is finding out the day that collections are being missed. So, you know, for the third week or the second week in a row, some of these collections, we got an email at 10 a.m. on a Friday saying collections would not be happening today. And that they'd be picked up the following week, only to then later get emails that some neighborhoods will be picked up at the next day. And so again, communications, we need to stick to the facts. And when we are getting emails at 10 a.m. after our constituents have already brought their collections to the curb. That is where their frustration comes out. I've not met some, anybody in the city who doesn't understand when a collection is missed, that happens, that will happen. But if we find out the day before, like we used to, then, then our constituents aren't upset, they're understanding. We're a very understanding city. But we cannot be told that collections will be occurring and then they don't occur. We can't be told at a 10 a.m. after all of our constituents have already put out their collections that it's not coming today. To then bring it back, to then only find out, you know, the day of that collections are happening that day. I know that has occurred in a lot of different districts throughout the city this week. Some on multiple occasions, some including yesterday, and thank you to the Director this morning for clarifying. That I got two separate emails over two hours yesterday from two executive members of the Department of Public Works. Giving me conflicting information about one neighborhood, whether or not it was getting picked up. And so thank you to Director for clarifying, but we need to just stick to the facts. We are all in this together and want to communicate that, but when we're given information, we have to be reliant that that information is accurate. And to date, the information we've been getting has not been accurate. And so that's why we're here today, working to try to figure out how to get on the same page and, and get the communication. Where we're getting accurate information like we used to get. So thank you for that. The next council person on my screen is Councilman Torrance.
Councilmember, I only got one question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Burnett.
And then we shut down. So, and again, Ms. Winkler, I, I, in no way implying. I don't know if those were directed to me or not, the comments, but not trying to imply anybody isn't working hard over there. I really appreciate everything that you guys do. I was just sort of figuring out if there's another way that we can get info out in real time, which is what I was trying to focus on.
Oh, and yes, we, we can, we can work on that, but just remember, these are, we're getting this information from the field. The field is reporting it to the supervisor, the supervisors are then reporting it to us. Within that time, sometimes we have employees that get injured, right? So then the crew is down one man or two men. There are different situations that's taking place if these guys are out in this field working. So as soon as we get that information, we are trying to convey that information. And yes, yes, I will say that there are other tools that we can use, we're going to try to employ those tools. But I want to remind you that those tools cost money. Because today when I was on the phone call trying to get the robocall set up, it, it was like forty, it was forty-one thousand. To communicate to two hundred and, two hundred and twenty thousand households. And that was only for four times, so two times for the A schedule and two times for the B schedule. Now, I'm thinking, is the juice worth the squeeze? Knowing that a lot of our households have abandoned landlines, number one. And, and, and knowing that we're not going to reach the two hundred and twenty thousand households, we're probably going to because they're chanting. You understand what I'm saying?
I got it, I got it.
One of the things that we've done, just to give you an idea, is that there's a significant senior network out there. And that network distributes newsletters to seniors through different modes. And so we've asked one of the essential networks to put our information in their newspaper and they agreed to do that. And that, that piece is supposed to go out tomorrow.
Yeah, thanks.
To all the senior centers, the recreation centers. We've reached out to community leaders who are, we, we directly met with all the CRT presidents one, just two days ago. Who we sent all that information to and they're disseminating that information. What we are not able to do, and I don't want to under, overestimate what we can do, but what we're not going to be able to do because we have to protect our, our staff. And we don't want them to get COVID and we know that there's a variant out there that's increasing. And so we're not doing the door to door right now.
Thank, thank.
Okay, so, but we, we are looking at those things, thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Yolanda, and, and, and Councilmember, you know, as we stabilize and provide consistent, stable, sustainable services. We can provide, that goes along with consistent, sustainable messaging, correct? And so I think as we go forward, we all know what the next two weeks looks like. And it's going to be really critical for us to not only increase our toolkit on how to communicate. But also really leverage, you know, you know, how, all of our communication methods. And I know, you know, Councilmember Burnett, I, I, I know the communication that you do firsthand. And we're going to need, continue to need that level of partnership, so I thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And, and, and if there's other ways that we can be supportive, let me know. The, the other question I had and I'll, you know, concede this round. Can you, I guess, speak to the ecosystem of private support? And I know that you all have been working way before the last few weeks with private companies. That have, you know, supplemented trash and recycling pickup. Can you speak to what those relationships look like? And, and how they've sort of, I guess, how, how is that going? How are those relationships going and supplementing the work through private, private companies? I think you're muted, Director.
Oh, sorry about that. Yes, we have a few private companies that's helping supplement a few routes. We have reached out to various other subcontractors to help us in this short term. And many of them are, are dealing with the same challenges that we are and we weren't able to get the level of support. Long term, a few of them are willing to, to provide some level of support, but they're dealing with the same short-term challenges we are. And we have reached out to them many weeks ago, we have even started reaching out twelve months ago. And so, you know, we're going to continue to leverage them, all right? And leverage everything we can to, to be able to get this going. But again, our subcontractors are really, they did, we did have a subcontractor that missed a route the other day. And they had to come and do a makeup route, so they're, they're, they're struggling as well. This is not a deep, I can continue to say, and I think we all know that this is not a DPW issue, right? This is a national issue and for solid waste organizations, it's something that, that, that just we're dealing with as an industry. So I thank you, as always, Councilmember, for your, your patience and your calls and, and us working together to solve issues.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll hold off for the next round, Mr. Chair.
And next up, Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the executive leadership team of DPW and first and foremost, thank you to the men and women of DPW. I can tell you from witnessing my own crew yesterday and today, having three persons is a shock. Because I know that in some of our crews, it's one or two people, to be honest about where we are in the services. As someone who previously worked in DPW, I understand the sacrifice that our men and women make. What I find most difficult is the real-time communication. And what I, what I'm not interested in is to grandstand, what I want to be interested in is solutions. So for the public, I'm offering an opportunity to you guys to let you know about a service offline that allows you to do unlimited robocalls. That will then get you the most squeeze for your juice. But my question is more so related because one of the things I observed in with crews across the city, the lack of mass usage, right? So what I want to know is lack of mass being used while servicing routes. So I want to know what mitigation efforts are you doing currently to maintain the staffing levels that we currently are? What checks and accountabilities do you have in those actual mitigation methods? As my first question. And then my second question, I'll let, will be related to whatever their responses.
So, so thank you for that and I'll let Ivan Moore Jackson speak to some of the details. But, you know, we provide messaging to our, our employees every, every, every morning. We provide PPE equipment to them every morning. We communicate the importance of, of protecting yourself out there. And, and, and when we see challenges, we have conversations with our staff. And so, you know, that's, that's our goal, right? Every day, every night, again, when you're three persons to the car, there's, there's challenges in social distancing, as you can imagine. So that contact tray, contact is very tough to get around when one person in the vehicle tests positive. It's very, very difficult when you're, when you're in those pack of trucks. But as we prepare to get in those kind of pack of trucks and as we do our work on the field, we do stress to our staff the importance of that. And so, and we will continue. We also stress the importance of vaccinations. And as you can see from DPW, we have seen our vaccination numbers double over the last two months. We have thanked the administration for providing stipends for folks that get vaccination. And we saw those numbers help us, help our employees, you know, move towards vaccination. And so, and where there's not, we're doing mandatory testing. We also are looking at standing up our own DPW testing site. So we've been working with me five, I think it's five, I, I, I want to say five guys, but I know that's not the right one. But I, I always say it wrong, but working with the vendor to help next week, next Wednesday, to set up our own vaccination. So DPW folks are, 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 are prioritized when they're in close contact, they can get immediately tested within hours. And so that, to, to Councilmember Cypher's point and Chair Cypher's point, that we can get folks back to work safely as quick as possible. And so the, the department is footing the cost for those additional testing. So that DPW doesn't have to wait, like I had a, a, a line around the block to get testing. And our setup appointment, I had to wait a couple of days to get there, that they can get it in real time. And so we're looking at doing a lot of things in order to not only, you know, ensure that we get these routes and this work done. But to protect our employees. So, Councilmember, I appreciate that and, you know, we're going to continue to work to push that messaging. I mean, ensure that our, our, our employees are as safe as possible. And Ivan Moore Jackson, if you want to add anything to that, you can, if not, no worry.
Now, I think, Director, you said exactly what we're doing. Each morning, the employees are given masks, gloves, hand sanitizer. They, they're required to wipe out their vehicles before they drive off and they are instructed to wear their mask throughout the day. So those are the things that are happening and we reinforce it. Daily supervisors do spot checks in the field to make sure they're wearing them. If you do see those or anyone in the public see that, if you could inform us with the truck vehicle. That would help so that we can talk to those employees directly about the COVID protocols.
Thank you, Director Jackson and Chief Jackson and Director Mitchell. My next question, and this is something that I've learned from, seeing the concept from the other agencies. The question, I would like to see the data for like these checks as Eric asks from the committee. I worry because, and I say this as someone who understands like the transmission of the Omicron variant is very easy. Especially when CDC says it can stay in the air for hours. My next question is, what are we doing in, at our actual yards and how these inspections are taking place? Because when I think about from my, my headband in DPW before, there were supervisors who drove behind routes to make sure routes were being completed. But how are we empowering supervisors to not only have the extra mask, but also who do we have within? who do we have within the agencies to talk to persons, to encourage them to get vaccinated, to wear their masks? Like, how are we using morale and persons in there to be validators to make sure that we're doing this mitigation? And not penalizing people? Because one of the things I learned, we can't penalize away into people being safe. We have to encourage them, but also create validators within those agencies.
No, I, 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 you're absolutely right. Penalizing is, is not the sole solution for this. Encouragement, education, and constant reminder and support is how you do it, right? And so to make sure that folks are as safe as possible and, and, and protecting themselves. And so I'll let Ivan speak to some of the details, but I know our supervisors are communicating that daily. And, um, I know there, there has been some challenges there. But, uh, you know, our folks have been working tirelessly to ensure that we're in that compliance. And Ivan, you may want to add some, some more to that.
Yeah, so our supervisors, our superintendent's division chief, um, they daily let employees know, wear your mask. Also, other employees help us, uh, with a little bit of peer pressure. And I think that we, we've been having, um, mostly, most employees, uh, in compliance as a result of their, um, their coworkers ensuring and making sure they're wearing the mask when they're in, in the vehicles. So I, I think that we, we're, we're always going to have a, a couple of people that want to pull it down for a minute just to get a little fresh air. But we will continue to make sure, uh, these people are wearing their mask, social distancing. And when we do have a COVID positive case, we, um, contact the ELC, we get the buildings clean. And also the, um, employees are required to wipe down their vehicles, uh, before they get in and, and when they get out. To ensure the safety for the next person. So we're trying to do everything to make sure our employees are safe and, um, following the, um, COVID guidelines.
In addition to that, we, Dr. Sessions has came to our, 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 our staff and leadership teams to communicate the importance of it. So we are, have brought in outside experts to, to really communicate and educate the public on, on safety. Safety first, right? This, this work, especially knowing that this is one of the top ten most dangerous jobs, not just physically, right? But, uh, you know, even emotionally, but we, again, with the onus of this work, safety first. So, so thank you for that, council member.
Thank you, Director, and again, I just want to extend a thank you to the men and women of Solid Waste. I can tell you from my first month in the first snowstorm, finding out that a young man had, had a head injury and another had torn the ACL doing this work. Made me understand drastically the labor intensiveness of this job and a reminder of it. So I'm thankful for the men and women who do this job. Just to give you a prelude to my next round of questions, it's going to be related to what your current vaccination rate is. So I just wanted to give you a heads up before we get to that question.
Are you good, uh, Councilman?
I'm good. I'm going to stick to the two questions.
Yeah, and just so you know, the vaccination rate is in the, uh, is in the presentation. If you didn't get it, I can forward it to you again. Uh, next up on my screen, uh, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Mitchell, uh, Chief Moore Jackson and team, thank you very much for being here today. Um, please convey my thanks to every single person in the Solid Waste Division, whether they're out on a truck or in the office. Appreciate all their efforts. First, I want to thank the department for putting together the collection status webpage. I think it's like BaltimoreCity.gov slash DPW dash collection dash status or whatever. That, that page has been incredibly helpful. Um, one of the things that I've been talking with Marsha Collins about is having a map. I'll give you a, a micro example. Uh, in my district, there are three different routes titled Federal Hill. It's Federal Hill one, two, and three. Um, so it's unclear exactly what those routes are. So I think understanding what the boundaries of those are, uh, not just for council members, but for citizens to be able to quickly look those up. So interestingly enough, Federal Hill one, two, and three cover the entire South Baltimore Peninsula. So when I was first advised of, um, Federal Hill routes, um, being, uh, temporarily suspended, I think this past Friday. I said it was just Federal Hill, but when in fact it was these other neighborhoods. So Marsha has provided a ArcGIS map, uh, which was extremely helpful. It has the route numbers on it. Uh, I think the next step in that, um, exercise, um, and I know Marsha's working on it. We spoke briefly yesterday, is to get the names of the routes on there, um, so that we know that. Um, and I think it would also be helpful, you may consider, uh, having that map posted on that collection status page. And I don't know if there's a way to do that, um, whether you want to use the ArcGIS background, or you want to use CodeMap or some other tool. Um, but I think that would be, um, very helpful. Once, um, those routes are named, I've already spoken with the Department of Planning about getting a map printed out. Uh, with a street grid for my district, and I'm happy to get one for each of the other thirteen districts, as well as one for the CP's office. So that we're able to quickly reference that. So I'll get those printed in PDF, and then I'll also ask for a hard copy. I think they're like two and a half by three and a half, whatever, whatever the poster board, um, sizes are. Before I move on, though, um, Kristen, Marsha, anyone, are, are, there's no concerns with, with that approach, correct? Or, or, you know, I know you have to work through some things, but we should be able to accomplish that, correct?
This is Jason. My understanding is yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep, we were talking about as a team today, and our GIS person believes that they can do it very shortly. So thank you for that, that input.
Thank you for being receptive to the suggestion, Director, I, I, and your, well, specifically Marsha, I do appreciate it.
And Councilman, just to let you know, um, Marsha was at, um, the Department of Planning Commission all afternoon, um, hearing CIP. Um, request because she is on that commission, so she's been there all afternoon. Um, she's planning to join us as soon as that is over.
Oddly enough, I'm the city council representative to the planning commission, so I, I sadly had to leave Marsha to come to this. So I know that she is tied up, but I also know that she is very engaged. I have no doubt about that. So I, I just figured planning commission was over, but apparently that party's still going as well. Okay, excellent. Um, the, the second thing is, there seems to be some confusion or conflicting information that is provided by 311 when, uh, uh, constituents call 311 to find out the status of what's going on. This is not a, uh, problem that is limited to DPW as an agency or department, or even trash and recycling curbside collection as a specific service within this much larger department. So this is a, a continual, um, issue, and, and it's not just specific to this mayoral administration. This has always been a, a problem of getting the operational details from the agency over to the 311 operators and getting it over in layman's terms that Jack or Jill neighbor can understand. Not necessarily someone who's designing the routes for DPW or a council member who understands how all this stuff works. But how do we target, you know, just our average citizens so that they understand? So when they call 311, they, they don't get a response. Well, the Federal Hill route has been, uh, postponed until next week. So I just want to flag that for you all, and I think that a lot of the frustration that you're hearing, i- is not just around, it, well, let me take a step back. My es- my frustration is not about the operational piece. I understand that, one, the people that do this job have one of the most difficult jobs, um, in the city. I mean, it's, it's pretty much up there with being a police officer. It's, it's a very challenging job, and it's thankless. But, two, it's a, um, kind of this larger communications issue that we've discussed, but just in informing people. So I, I would, um, encourage you all to consider streamlining how you get information from the operational side, from what Chief Moore Jackson's team is actually doing on a day-to-day basis. And get that over to 311 so that people can get accurate information. And I think if you figure out a way to do that, you're going to get rid of eighty percent of the headache that, that you're dealing with, not just today, um, but over, um, the past couple of weeks. My, my final question for this round, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair. I noticed the announcement, uh, came out and, and started with the week of the eighteenth, uh, which is going to be, uh, next week, right? It's going to be Tuesday through Friday because we do curbside recycling and trash Tuesday through Fridays. So, uh, Group A, north of North Avenue, is going to be the, uh, is going to take place the eighteenth through the twenty-first, Tuesday through Friday, on their normally scheduled day. And then Group B will take place the following week, the week of the twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, Tuesday through Friday. What the notification did not indicate is what is going to happen this week.
So, um, Councilman is often chiming in, so we, we, we kind of said that.
Hey, Yolanda, I'm sorry, you're coming in kind of fuzzy or muffled.
Okay, when we set the page, so we had a collection delay page, which continued to keep you, I don't know what's going on with this thing. So we, we have a collection delay page, which we continue to update as it relates to group this week. And then we have the recycling modification plan page, which is a separate page, but they're all together. So when you come up on our website, you'll see the modification announcement, and then you'll see the collection delays. And we kept that separate because we eventually are going to eliminate the collection delays because we have this modification plan if everything goes well. And I certainly want to thank you for your 311 comment because one of the things that I'm doing now is weekly, if not daily, I'm calling Sharon Rosenbaum, and I'm saying to her, how can we help you? What questions are you getting today? Yesterday, I provided her script. Today, when I called her, she said to me, Yolanda, we not, we're not having any issues in terms of the message. The issue now is technology. So many people were hitting the website that the map, um, there was, it was, they were having, um, uh, time trying to get into the map because it was so slow. And so I reached out to DC, and they quickly fixed that. So it should be good. But other than that, Councilman, I can tell you that in working with her these last two days and just making sure and being available for them for when they have issues, and then sending her scripts and all of that, um, I think things are going to get better.
Yeah, and, and, and to add to that, uh, uh, council member, I, I just want to say, um, oh, first, your, your feedback was excellent, but as we begin to optimize our routes, we're then going to be able to communicate them a lot different because we're going to be able to see that in real time. Where the truck is, what percentage of routes are, what those routes are. And we'll be able to not only engage with our own team to monitor that, we also will be able to share that with our 311, and so they'll be able to have real-time information. So as we continue to shift the technology, not just from now having these maps currently, but as we continue to digitalize our routes and really leveraging our software and our EBL system, we're going to have a nice control room where we're going to be able to monitor our operations real time, and that's where we're heading. Um, over the next two years, is really beginning to really leverage that technology, as you said, Councilman Costello.
I, I appreciate that. So just to get back to the, the original question I posed, what's, what's happening this week? Are we, we're picking up everything in the city this week, and then on the eighteenth, we're going to the bi-weekly, is that correct?
This week, we're picking up, uh, locations where we haven't missed the last two weeks. Um, so it's almost like a makeup week. Um, and next week, we'll begin our AB, um, routes.
So the only thing that's taking place, um, Tuesday, two days ago, through tomorrow, is, um, missed collections over the past two weeks, is that correct?
Yes, but I would like to say that our crews, they come in on Monday during their time off to do some routes, and they will be coming in on Saturday to do a few routes as well, uh, for makeup.
Okay, so I, I think I understand that. I, I don't want to harp on this because it's already been discussed over the last two hours, but I appreciate that clarification. None of that was clear from the communications that were sent out yesterday, I think. So that's kind of exacerbated the, the, the situation. Lastly, so as we get, um, inquiries from our constituents. So for example, I just forwarded something to Kristen and, and asking her how you would like us to handle this. I'll just ask you, Director, and you, Chief Moore Jackson. So I got an email that said, hey, these, these two blocks weren't hit last week, and we obviously didn't have the week before. How do you guys want us to handle it? So we're not, so we're not like, you know, you know, just pouring on you another fire hydrant to drink out of. But these are obviously issues that need to be resolved. How do you want us to handle those?
Uh, 311 is the best way to handle it. And if it's a emergency, again, you always feel free to reach out to me. And Ivan Moore Jackson, but 311 is the best way to handle any complaints to DPW.
Okay, but if, okay, so I got these two blocks. I'm going to either tell the constituent to file a 311 request, or I'll probably just do it myself, right? Once I, once I have that taken care of, I want to make sure these two blocks are taken care of before call a business on Saturday. Is there any follow-up that's necessary, or am I hearing, I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, Director? That if it's put in 311, it's going to get addressed. And I'm just talking about the missed stuff from the past two weeks that still hasn't been collected yet. It sounds like you have plans to pick all of that up by, by call a business Saturday, but I just want to make sure I understand what you want from us to ensure that it gets completed.
Yes, uh, please, uh, issue a 311. Uh, you also can let us know, um, whereby we have the capacity. Again, we're, we're trying to make up as much as we can, uh, this week, and we missed the last two weeks to get it. We will try our best, um, um, and, and try to do it. We are bringing in a few, uh, crew on Saturday to, to pick up some areas as well. Um, and so please put in a request to 311, and whereby we have, uh, the le- level of staff, we will definitely, um, uh, try to address those concerns.
And should we, should we forward that 311 SRN along with the addresses to anyone to let them know it's a council priority? Or do you want us to just leave it alone and wait until after Saturday and then follow up with the team?
I said, send us as a council priority as well.
Okay, and who should that be emailed to? Chief Moore Jackson?
And myself.
To, to you and Chief Moore Jackson only?
Yeah, and we'll get it to the right people. Um, again, with, depending on our crews and our levels, uh, and the capacity, we will try our best to get it.
I completely understand if something has not been picked up. And I'm also understanding if we ask for it to be picked up and you can't pick it up. I want to make sure that I'm following the appropriate protocol of your preference to ensure that it does not get lost in the weeds. That, where I would become frustrated is if my message to you doesn't get to the right person, and I don't get a response. So if you come back to me and tell me, Councilman, I can't hit these two streets. I really wanted to, but we're slammed and we got, you know, folks out. I'm going to understand that. I just need that communicated to me timely and clearly is, is what I'm requesting. So I will, so moving forward, council members are to send an email to Chief Moore Jackson with a CCDU Director, correct?
Well, go, I, 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 I'm assuming that you're talking about the last, uh, this week. Our normal protocols to go through to the 311, but.
I'm talking about any, or pardon me, Director, let me interrupt just so I can clarify and get you to a quicker answer. I'm talking about anything that's been missed over the past couple of weeks up until January eighteenth, when we start the new schedule. I'm not, January eighteenth and on is a whole new ballgame.
Okay.
Anything that hasn't been picked up in a week or two weeks or three weeks, how do we handle that through January eighteenth?
You, you are correct. Please email 311 and, and, and give Ivan Moore Jackson, myself a courtesy update.
Copy that. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I have further questions, but I'm happy to wait until the next round.
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind waiting, um, Councilman Conway has, um, has to be somewhere. He had a hard stop, he told us about, so if we can just give him an opportunity to ask his questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, it, it, it's, it's a quick one, and, uh, I'll be very brief. I, one, I, I appreciate, um, all the work that you guys have been putting into it. Chief Moore, all the questions, Director, all the questions that you, you fielded for me well past work hours into the night while you're spending time with the family. I, I know you've been working incredibly hard. I know all your team has been working incredibly hard. And without question, the folks on the back of those trucks have been busting their butts to, to meet, meet the demand, especially in the midst of a lot going on. Um, so I, I, I really do appreciate you guys. I, um, I, I know right now, we're, we're taking this week to sort of shore up. Um, I want to make sure we get it right next week. So I, 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 I want you guys, and maybe you don't have to answer this now, but begin to think about, um, some of the things that led to challenges in the previous weeks that could happen in the coming weeks. For instance, we know that we For instance, we know that we have snow coming on Sunday, eighty percent chance. Uh, how's that gonna affect us? Could it affect us the days before with any prep? Uh, on Saturday and, and missed pickups, things like that? And, um, what we can do as a council to properly communicate? Um, and, um, you know, I, look at us as emissi- emissaries, uh, of, um, you know, my colleagues have said time and time again, uh, Councilman Costello, um, just said it, um, Councilwoman Obraos has said it as well. Um, a big part of the, um, the thing that we're looking for is when we are having problems, um, giving us proper notice that we can, uh, very clearly, uh, speak to constituents about what's going on. Um, and I, I, I want you guys to think about the hurdles that we face in the, in the past, in the past two or three weeks, um, and what our response would be if we have snow, or if we don't complete our routes, um, in the new A B system. Um, or if we continue to see high numbers of COVID. Um, so, uh, you don't have to answer that now, I, I do have to step away, but I, I encourage you guys to think about it, um, just so we can all be on the same page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Council Vice President Middleton. Yeah, I see your screen is buffering, if you wanna turn off your screen and then just use audio. Council Vice President, do you have a question?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you, okay, yeah, I've been having technical difficulty since, since early t- two o'clock, so just bear with me. So I, I, I have a question at the end, but I do have a statement. I'm, um, I'm, I'm just keep uh, uh, video off so I can and things. And, and, but I first just want to, I, I would be remiss if I didn't, um, give kudos to Director Mitchell. Um, I go way back with Matt. Um, Ivan, this job, the work that they continue to do. Um, uh, and, and, uh, Marcia, you know, she called me Sun- Sunday, we talked around eleven o'clock at night. So their passion is here, that, that ma- that management is, is working hard. But yes, we are in a pandemic, so need to wrap around this agency be- cuz it's showing it is one of the most important give services to for our residents. So we have to make sure that they get ample federal go- the blocks that are being missed, all, all of that is technology. And we have to work together to make sure, or that they get that money to help them. And, um, so, uh, I, I money. How, how can we help you? How can the council help you make sure you get ample money for raises for this? But I do know that all of you, um, any questions I have, you reach out and you're there. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman Porter. Do you have another question, Council Vice President? I don't think so. All right, Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, um, just wanna echo-
Um, just, um, if the Director-
Councilman, I'll stand down until, um, Council, um, Council, uh, Council Vice Chair, excuse me, Vice Chair Middleton, um, finishes her question, sir.
Oh, yeah, see, I keep going in and out, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Porter, I guess you were on, I, oh, okay. But can, can Director Mitchell just, oh, okay. Director, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Vice Chair.
And you, you, you haven't, you haven't, you haven't talked about how this ARPA money can help you. Can you just kinda talk on the needs of how you, what you would like this, your mon- this ARPA money to do? And how we can support that?
No, no, thank you for that, I, I think from a D V W perspective, we're looking at it all holistically and working very well with the administration on what we're doing, not just ARPA dollars, we're also looking at our C I P dollars. But two, we're really unpacking the infrastructure bill, um, and seeing how that can help us as well. So what we're doing is working really closely with the administration on all these funding sources so that we can better not only leverage solid waste for the, at present, and getting, you know, equipment and facilities updated, but two, so how we can leverage our zero waste future and our, and our, and the future of our solid waste, uh, facilities for, for decades to come. And so, you know, Janelle and, and Marcia and the team, we're unpacking, we're reading, we're summarizing, we're going to D C to, to get seminars, so that we can make sure that this money come home, right? And so, uh, the administration has been really supportive in us and doing that, and, and I gotta tell you, been very supportive with me. Um, you know, coming here new into Baltimore City, uh, and really trying to turn this tide and making sure that we digitalize routes, that we upgrade our facilities, you know, get, you know, fleet, make sure we take care of our employees. So, I, I, I just, I wanna, and, and Vice President Middleton, I mean, to tell you, you know, all the love that you gave us, and all the love you continue to give us, we do appreciate you out there scrapping and fighting for us. I mean, we just need to continue that, um, as a group, as, as a partnership, so that we can get all the things that we need to make sure that our solid waste program is stabilized for years and decades to come. So, you know, we just gotta keep doing what we're doing, and, and keep fighting the fight and looking at all these money sources and making sure it gets here home to Baltimore City.
Oh. Uh, Director, um, I'm gonna be taking over for Councilman Schleifer, he just called, he was having some connectivity issues. Uh, Vice President Middleton, are you good? Okay, we're gonna move to, I think Councilwoman Porter was next, was anyone else in the queue on the council side, uh, before we get to Councilwoman Porter? Okay, Councilwoman Porter, floor is yours, and then I'll cycle through.
Thank you so much, sir. Um, I, Director Mitchell, I have two questions, I wanna, um, you know, I totally understand, you know, what we're dealing with now, but as, as we know, uh, the pandemic is not gonna go anywhere anytime soon. There's another variant that is more deadlier than what we're seeing now that is on the way that we're seeing, um, from across the, across the world. Um, I wanna kinda pivot to sustainability efforts here. Um, one of the things from an operations perspective and a staffing level perspective, um, is how we can increase the number of temp workers into the workforce to kind of surplus and circumvent what you all kinda do on a daily, daily basis. So leveraging those temp workers, whether they be in the city and the, and the surrounding jurisdictions, to kinda bring them into the city, is there an opportunity to do that? To kinda circumvent like the long, and, and from our hearings, a long arduous process of bringing on new employees, um, to, uh, to city agencies?
Director, 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 hold tight before you answer that. Uh, Miss, Mr. Green, or whomever staffing the committee, would you please elevate Marcia Collins to panelist? Who's staffing?
Yes, sir, be right with you.
Richard, please, uh, uh, elevate Marcia Collins to panelist. Thank you, Councilwoman Director, my sincere apologies, Director, please respond.
No, thank you, uh, I, I, I wanna defer this answer to, to, uh, Ivan Moore Jackson. Uh, but before I, I do that, the answer is yes, right? And so, we're working with, uh, Mayor's Office, uh, Employment, uh, Development, Mo Ed. We've, um, are looking to bring on some temporary staff now, um, I think eleven or twelve staff members immediately, so that we can get that level of support. So we're looking at all options, um, to, to be able to do that. And Ivan, uh, Moore Jackson probably can get into a little bit more details on those efforts to get people on immediately, get some, uh, even temporary leave, um, so that, uh, we can make sure that we stabilize this as fast as possible.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Porter, we are, we are working with, uh, staffing agencies right now. We have employees from, um, uh, the Spec, Spec Company, we have employees from Lazarus Right, and also Green Job Works. We have employees from, um, Mo Ed Hire Up Program that are working with us. And we also have, um, we, we're bringing in ten, uh, temporary workers, uh, seasonal maintenance aides on next week, uh, some of them are starting on Tuesday. So we have, um, looked at those options, we have, we have been working with temporary agencies to help us staff up, um, during this challenging time.
Thank you so much, Chief Jackson, um, excuse me. As a follow-up question, what, what is, what is the, the relevant number to bring our staffing levels up to normal? So you mentioned ten to twelve, um, if we get those ten to twelve, will we be able to be at a level where we will see consistent, consistency, um, with our operations? And I believe, Director Mitchell, that may be for you or-
Yes, so temporary, uh, uh, temporary staffing is not your long-term solution, right?
For sure.
So, as, as, as you definitely know, well, we, what I think, um, as, as we fit, begin to finish optimizing our trash routes, right, we would know that level of service. We also will begin to optimize our, um, recycling routes. Then we would know the level of service, and we're working diligently with, you know, Rubicon around our traffic routes to be able not only, you know, optimize on which we're getting close to doing, but also providing best practices on where staffing levels should, should lie based upon that program. So that I almost did hear it and say, this is what we need, right? That we're gonna let professionals that do this every day to let us know where those staffing levels are. So we're doing that work, so as we transition digitally, that information is gonna surface, uh, with the help of our, uh, our contractors that are doing a great work.
Thank you so much, and, and, you know, just to confirm the timeline for the public's knowledge, is that gonna be like a one to three month to a six month, um, kinda deep dive assessment? Are we looking at, um, are we, are we look, like, what's the time to that?
So for, uh, the, the trash routes, we have seen the first draft from Rubicon of our routes. Um, we're currently assessing those routes, making sure they, the left turn and the right turn and the U-turn all make sense, that the loads make sense and all that good stuff. So that's happening, uh, right now as we speak, we'll get another draft and, and then we'll, we'll get closer to moving forward. I think within months of that coming out. Regarding the, uh, recycling routes, we won't be getting that work until the last blue container goes out because once all the blue containers go out, we will begin to know citywide that participation, citywide, how much are going in the blue container, so that we know how many times we have to drop, drop off at the transfer station landfill. And then we'll be able to then digitalize those routes based upon, you know, some optimization software. So that usually takes anywhere from six months to nine months. So, uh, we're looking at, uh, pushing out the last blue cans into February, early March, and then, uh, immediately thereafter, um, begin to start looking at optimizing, optimization.
Thank you so much, Director Mitchell. And my second question has to do with, given in those six months, how are we training those temp workers to really optimize and know the routes? One of the issues and that many of my colleagues have brought on today is, you know, we're going into neighborhoods, but we're missing streets. So can you speak to, um, can you speak to how, um, the technical assistance and training of new employees and how that's being, um, sustained as new employees, these, uh, you know, these new employees, whether they, they are new employees to D P W, or just don't know the routes that they're going into? Um, because I think that will, excuse me, that will cut down on, um, a lot of the, uh, traffic that we're sending to, um, Chief Jackson, who is the salt of the earth. I just wanna put that out there. Uh, just wanna put that out there, she is absolutely amazing, but I'm not gonna go too far into that cuz, you know, oh, she's amazing. But I, I wanna make sure that we are really thinking through from a systematic perspective how we're optimizing those routes and the technical assistance and training that we're, we're utilizing so that we're not making, not, we're not making careless mis- not careless, but, um, we're not making mistakes that can be easily kinda managed, if that makes sense. Sorry, I have my mom on my mind, careless mistakes.
Absolutely, with our digital, uh, routes, and as you, as you know, a new person that's on that routes may turn, may not get, may miss something, not purposely, but just because they're new to that route. Um, so we're, you know, of course, moving to a more digital solution will help solve many of those issues. One of the things that helps solve many of the issues is mentoring, right? Having a more senior person on with a more junior person. And so, being able to have that mix on those routes are critical because where I may miss it, somebody on the, the truck say, "Oh, no, 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 we gotta hit that block, we may have missed it." And so that's the rea- reason why we try the new staff to put them on with more senior staff so that we can reduce that from happening. But also what we're doing, and I just want to kinda uplift our newly, um, 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 program whereby, as you know, we were having issues with our C D O drivers. And so, we created, and I, when I say thanks to Ms. Barbara Rogers, um, that really helped lift that up for us, our internal C D O program, whereby we're training our laborers to be, get their C D Ls so they can become drivers. But number one, we can feel more driver's seat, but number two, so that we can bring on people that already know how to use those trucks, know those routes, that they can come in here and they can hit the ground running. And three, so that we can give folks an opportunity at promotion. In order to be a supervisor, you need to be a driver, right? And so, being able to give tho- those folks opportunity promotion, and we have graduated over the last two months, six folks, I think two are ready for testing, and then we're gonna be starting another class within the next few weeks. And so we're gonna be continuing this throughout the year. So we're, we're excited about that, and we're starting to see some of that morale, right? I get a chance to promote, I get a chance to feed my family, I get a chance to lead that crew. And so, we're doing all those things to help mitigate those, those issues, uh, Councilwoman.
Thank you so much, Director, I was more, um, geared towards, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify my question cuz I didn't get, I, I didn't get an appropriate answer. Um, I was more gearing towards standard operating procedures and documentation of routes, and how that's being transferred.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can let Ivan Moore Jackson speak to how our paper routes are done and communicated to a new driver.
So, um, right now, because we don't have the routing software, we have to pair the, um, the, the new person with one of our older, uh, people that know the route. So that's the, that's one of the challenges that we face, uh, when we're piecing crews together. Uh, if, if, if no one on the crew knows the route, then the supervisor has to ride that route to, uh, direct them to where they're going. But there's, there's, uh, four supervisors for each partner. So, if we have a couple of crews that have to be navigated, then it'll be challenging. The supervisor can't be in two places at once. Um, so right now, the best, the best solution that we can, uh, do right now is to, uh, pair them up with a seasoned person.
I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, um, and, and Chief Jackson, we can talk offline about this. I wonder if there's an opportunity, um, that I can lend some, some assistance, um, to you all to kind of like, really just documenting, like, in Word form, or whether it be in a map form, like, how, how we can, how we can, you know, give somebody a book and say, here, these are the routes that you need to, to do, these are the streets. Everyone has technology through their cell phone whereby they can kinda follow the, you know, they can kinda follow those routes, but it gives a step-by-step process of the routes and the streets that need to be, um, need to be included in that particular route. And so I'm more than willing to, to lend that assistance there. Um, I'll save my other questions for the next round, um, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, if you have a connected question to your line of questioning, you can continue, you've been very patient.
Uh, no, sir, thank you.
Okay. Just make sure I didn't miss anybody. Okay, I guess we're back to me. Um, Director, can you, can you explain, or can somebody in your team explain the mechanics of this every other week? How, you know, how that's gonna, I understand the dates and that it's picked up on the regular dates, I understand that piece. Uh, my question is regarding, how do we know that it's gonna work? And the level of service, you, you guys, uh, said it's gonna be based on reliability and consistency. And so I just wanna understand how, how you guys were able to come to that conclusion and pr- be able to predict that this, you know, that, that that's the plan that will work. In the past, um, I think it was prior to you coming to Baltimore, uh, we- In the past, I think it was prior to you coming to Baltimore, we, when there was an issue, they set up, they set up different spots for recycling drop-off. Certainly we prefer to have curbside. But how, how did you come to the conclusion that this is, that this is the solution and that this is gonna work?
I, I, I honestly, based upon us, many of, I think about seventy-four, seventy-five percent of the blue cars coming out and having that level of capacity, additional capacity for recycling. And being able to look at our staffing, you know, we, we looked at, you know, all those models, all those factors, all those variables and said, this is a model that we think could be sustainable, reliable and consistent. And, you know, barring, you know, no new, you know, you know, pandemic coming and wiping out, you know, our whole, you know, entire crew, we, we feel like this could be reliable. And to your point around, I, I guess what was done last time with some drop-off locations. We, in, in this model, we, we are, you know, opening our five residential drop-off locations for unlimited recycling as well. And you can do that Monday through Saturday. We also are engaging in looking at the options, just like you said, and I, and I thank you for that feedback, as seeing if we can find any other extended program where we can have more drop-off locations so that it can be convenient for folks, that when it's not there, we, they have a way whereby they can drop off more of their materials. So we're, we're looking at those options right now in addition to our residential, five residential drop-off locations. So, you know, you know, I have a lot of experience in, in solid waste management in a, in a large municipal city, as you know. We believe that this will work. What we didn't want to do is end the program and get folks to put recycling in, in, in trash cans because we do believe in the less, best, less waste, better Baltimore and zero waste solution. And we want to give our folks as many options as we can, but we also want to provide stable and consistent services. And so we think that this, this will and can work. And we know the first two, the first two weeks, you know, that, that everything don't always go smoothly. But we're gonna be here, just like we have been, ready to respond quickly. So communication again, as everyone mentioned, is going to be critical. And we're gonna be ready to look at where things are going right and where things may, could go wrong and be able to respond quickly. So we have our team ready. We have daily meetings that we're meeting right now just to prepare so that we can be as prepared as possible. But we do know that, you know, operations, when you go to something new, something could go wrong. And, and we're going to be ready to respond to that quickly. So thank you so much for, for that information and suggestions. And we're gonna, and we're taking that feedback and we're looking at those options to provide other outlets for dumping of the recyclables.
And with, with this plan, will you, will you be able to anticipate if there is gonna be a shortage further in advance than you guys are currently anticipating it? Because like I said, the, the primary issue at play and the primary level of frustration that's across the city right now is, is not that a collection was missed. It's that people had to drag it out to the curb back, the snow, rain, and it becomes soggy. It blows all over the city, blows into sewer systems and stuff. And so with this new plan, will you know days in advance if you are gonna be missing a collection?
We won't, we won't know days in advance, but we definitely will be able to have more flexibility with our staff, right? And because this doesn't put so much of the load, it gives us a little, a little buffer. But we won't know days in advance, but we should be able to give, you know, updates as fast as possible in order to be able to respond. And, you know, we believe that, you know, this model interim can work. And we're gonna try to be as flexible as possible. And again, communicate as early as possible when we, we're, we're gonna miss routes. What we have heard and what I've heard in the community meetings just two days ago is that residents are, were frustrated with pushing out their car and then having to pull it in. And by creating a model that's sustainable, are more reliable, we, we believe that we'll be able to try to prevent that where we can.
Right, and another, thank you. And another issue, another issue that we've seen exacerbated this week, when you have different drivers than normal going through different routes, like some of my colleagues mentioned, how certain streets are missed or even, you know, just the nuance of when the truck needs to turn around or, or go to a certain spot, especially when you have blocks where there's only a few houses, you know, at a dead end or whatever it may be. I was under the impression, and I, and I could be mistaken on this, that we had purchased this technology a while ago. Have, has DPW purchased this, this GPS technology, like the route, the route navigation system?
Yes, so I, I, prior to me, and I can't tell you the exact date, but it was definitely was prior to me, that Rubicon Systems was procured to begin to do the route analysis. Rubicon, I, I think November first provided us our first draft of the routes and it was somewhere in November. Our, our folks now have to go and make sure that that information is done. And the reason why that's provided a draft, because we have to now make sure that what's electronic is really operational in the field. Sometimes it'd tell you to turn left, but you can't because of certain restrictions. And so our folks are doing that work and Rubicon is now working on, on, on draft two. Again, route, routing going from paper to electronic, it's very challenging. And so when, when you do it, you want to make sure you do it right. So when routes are rolled out, that number one, they're even, that they are able to get, our staff are able to get through. But two, so that the public can expect and knowing services will be had. So yes, it was purchased prior to me. I, I can't tell you the date, but you know, Rubicon gave us our first look at this only less than, you know, about forty-five days ago.
Okay, and when, when can we expect to, to see that installed and, you know, and, and operational in all the trucks? Like what's the turnaround time from, from where we are today to where we need to be?
Where the draft, normally you, you, you go to another draft or two of, of, of the routes to make sure you have it optimized correctly. And then you do some type of pilot test before you go live to make sure that you shore up any issues. And so normally that process is gonna take another, you know, eight to twelve weeks and potentially depending on how clean those routes are and based upon having that staff to be able to go and, and do those tests. So we're still somewhat a ways away, but we're very, very close.
Thank you, Director. I'm stepping back in for Councilman Schleifer. Richard, can you please elevate Councilman Schleifer to panelist? Okay, let's see, we just did Councilwoman Porter. Colleagues, I apologize because I don't know what order we went in. So I'm just gonna go as you appear on my screen. I'll reserve my questions for last. Councilman Torrance. Actually, pardon me, hang on, Torrance, did everyone ask questions so far? Glover, did you go? Glover? I know that Cohen went, Ramos went.
Glover did too.
All right, Torrance, you're up.
I'll be quick with it. Director, I saw the recent vaccination rate. My question is, how did you get to that? And how, what was the previous number one before the incentive and post-incentive? I just want to make sure like, so the public knows the work that you've done. I just want to make sure it's highlighted.
Yvonne, maybe you could jump in, but I think, you know, just a few months ago, the vaccination rate was in the high twenties, mid to high twenties. And so it has tripled since over the last few months. For several reasons, number one, continue to outreach with our staff and let them know how important a vaccination is. But in addition to that, you know, folks just want, some of them just want to be safe. And that, once we broaden doctor sessions, folks took those communications with the doctor about the health and some of the positives of, of getting vaccinated very seriously. And then last but not least, you know, the setup that the administration put out and, and I want to thank the administration for doing that. I mean, it really helped move the needle a little bit further. So there's been a lot of efforts on so many different fronts. I want to thank Yvonne Moore Jackson, her team for really, when I say pushing, so thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Torrance, you good?
I have one additional question, if Jake's allowing me.
Now's the time to ask it, sir. You're, you're up.
I'll put it in the chat.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleague. Just one last question. Director, we talked one day in my, one of my neighborhoods about the optimization that you're doing, which I think is gonna be amazing. And I noticed that on the schedule with the slides, that Thursdays are your big days for recycling. There's just more routes. Do you anticipate not tomorrow, not next week, maybe next year, that we may have to do some adjustments to the days?
Potentially when you do your route optimization, you are looking at route balance, right? Making sure not only the balance of units, but also the balance of load and debris. Because sometimes you can have less units, but a lot of debris and that, that route may be short in units, but it will be long and having to drop off those loads. So that's what, that's what the program does. It tries to do that in limited, as much as possible, but potentially that could be an outcome that a small group of residents may have their recycling day change.
Yeah, it just seemed like even just with working this week and last week, that, you know, my Thursday days were swamped and my Wednesday day was not swamped, you know? So I could just kind of see it even in the, the workings of the district. So I appreciate that you're not only investing in our facilities, as I mentioned earlier, but also trying to, to, to balance it out. So, you know, just for the public, so I can have them tomorrow, but it might happen at some point to, to make sure that we're, we're balancing the route. Now eventually, when most people are recycling, obviously there might need to be an adjustment there as well. And we're working hard on that. But I just, again, thank you for what you're doing. Thanks for your help this evening and answering, Chief Moore Jackson, answering my email about those other pieces. My residents are seeing their collections picked up this evening. So I'm getting the texts and the emails as we speak. So I really appreciate that and, you know, hope to work with you more on this. Certainly, you know, want to echo what, what Councilman Glover said earlier that we, you know, do want to be your champions and make sure that everything is, is working because our, our, our guys out there are working really hard. And I know that you've acknowledged that and, and we certainly do too. So, so thanks again, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, Councilman Torrance?
Yes, here's my other question, sorry. I have neighborhoods who are split across North Avenue. The question is, how are we gonna deal with neighborhoods who are split, split across North Avenue? For instance, Penn North, Penn North ends on Cumberland Street, south of North Avenue. So I just want to make sure, how are we going to handle those neighborhoods who do cross North Avenue?
Maybe Yvonne, can you answer that?
Yeah, so the, so North Avenue, if, if that, if the Cumberland Street is on the route. So even, even though we're saying North Avenue, there, there are routes that may go a little above or, or below North Avenue. So they will be collected. If they click, if, if they use that map and click, put their address in, it'll tell them whether they want to be on A or B. And that's how they would know. So if you look at the map and it has the line of North Avenue, when you kind of get into the corners of it, 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 it goes upward or downward. So putting their address in would be the most accurate way to find out if they're on A or B.
I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that was out there for the public and get that clarification since I have a most of West North Avenue. And I just want to make sure that my community knows.
Thank you. Do you have another question, Councilman Torrance?
No, sorry, I'll back to you.
Okay, thank you. And if I can just ask, I guess, one, one question on a follow-up before my WebEx crashed. The recycling that is currently scheduled for tomorrow, the pickups, not the one that, the director that you've clarified already earlier today, the regular collections that are scheduled routinely for Friday, are those getting picked up tomorrow or are they not because they were caught up sometime this week?
I, I'll let Yvonne Moore Jackson, but my understanding, go ahead, Yvonne.
So the only recycling that's being picked up tomorrow is those Friday routes that were missed the last two weeks. And that list should have gone out by now, but if it has not, I'll make sure you all get it. Janelle gets the list so she can send it to you all.
Okay, thank you. And if, and if somebody, I'm not sure who, who the point person is for 311, but whoever that is, if they can relay that to 311. I've received numerous messages during this hearing with that specific question. So thank you for clarifying, but 311 is still advising people that their regular day is gonna be picked up tomorrow and that the new schedule starts next week. So we, we all understand the new schedule started next week. But 311 is still advising people that if they normally would be picked up on a Friday, they're still gonna be picked up tomorrow. So if somebody can relay that message to 311. Uh, next up, Councilman Costello? Councilman Costello?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, where do we leave things with the GPS installation and the use of the Rubicon software? Is, is, did you mention the status of GPS being installed on each of the trucks?
Right, so each of the trucks will have their own smart device that will be able to feed the coordinates of the routes, the route itself, and for us to be able to know the GPS of where that truck is within that route. And so that's all part of the scope of work within the, the contract with Rubicon.
Oh, but that doesn't currently exist, that's, that's planned, correct?
So my understanding is that some of our, our, our vehicles are already outfitted with that as we've been testing and working and coming up with drafts with the route. But as we implement it, it will be fully implemented.
Mr. Chair, can we make that a request to the committee to just get a summary of, you know, we have X number of trucks and Y number of them already have it installed?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm also, just for the ease of use here, and I know there's a, a lot of attendees who are waiting to testify, I'm going to also email, reemail you the questions I emailed you last week, as well as some more detailed questions on that, just to, to spare the time now, because I assume you don't have that data on you right now. So I will add those to the, to the requests. Uh, Councilman Costello, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I do. Director, would it be reasonable for you to provide that information by the end of the month?
I, Yvonne, I think we'll be able to provide how much, how our trucks are outfitted with Rubicon. I think we should be able to do that by the end of the month.
If you need more time, that's fine. Just you, you tell me what's a reasonable timeframe for that request.
I think that's reasonable.
January thirty-one? Okay, excellent, thank you. The only other comment I will make is that, I think this is the overarching theme of the, the hearing today. If you have any inkling that a route is gonna be missed or there's, you know, even more severe than the already severe staffing shortages that exist, I know that it is not commonplace for an agency to want to acknowledge that publicly. I, I think you may consider acknowledging those things publicly right upfront. I know there's a desire to, to complete the job every day. I know all of you work very hard and you want to find a way to make it work, even when you don't have the tools to make it work. From my perspective, I would rather know upfront, it's not gonna happen or there's a good chance it's not gonna happen. Because at least then I can go out and defend the department's actions instead of kind of, you know, being in, in the dark about what's happening. One, one other recommendation for your consideration, knowing internally how badly you've been hit with COVID, you may consider in the future posting the number of employees that you have in the solid waste division that are operational and the percentage of those on any given day that have COVID. I think you'll find that people would be very sympathetic to it if they knew that. I haven't disseminated those numbers, which I'm aware of in a public fashion, but I have privately in one-on-one conversations with constituents mentioned that. And once those numbers are mentioned to them, they have an entirely different outlook and set of sympathy for what you and your employees are going through. So I would respectfully urge you to consider sharing that type of information and sharing it on those timeframes moving forward. And again, I think this communication issue will resolve about eighty. And again, I think this communication issue will resolve about 80% of your, your headache. Thank you for, for taking into consideration my recommendations, Director, and Chief Moore Jackson and team. I yield the four, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually will raise that 80% to probably 99%. I think if people know in advance, then certainly they'll be understanding. Any other council people with questions before we move on to public testimony? Okay, let me just ask my two last questions that I will ask you here, and then the rest I'll just email you because they're data-related. How long do you anticipate this new schedule going for? I saw your flyer lists off January, February. Are you anticipating it going beyond that, or is that the cutoff and you plan to resume normal weekly collections in March?
Those, those days are indefinite until we be able to stabilize our staffing and stabilize. We, we don't know what's, what's coming. We didn't know what, you know, this, this new wave was coming. So we're, we're going to be assessing that on a, you know, weekly by weekly basis. And we'll definitely communicate our updates as we know.
So it's, so it's indefinite until we hear otherwise?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so with that being said, you know, especially as we transition into the new schedule and people figure out what's going on, would you guys entertain setting up a drop-off site per council district? In the meantime, for the off weeks that they're not getting it, so at least while we're getting, I mean, I can only speak for myself. I got hundreds of complaints since Friday about this. And so if I could say, hey, you know, you have this drop-off location in the center of the district, and each of my colleagues can do the same, I think that, that would alleviate a lot of the burden and also alleviate a lot of people who have already been emailing saying they're simply going to just put it in the trash in the off weeks. So is that something that you guys can look into, dropping a, a truck or a dumpster in each council district?
I don't know if we'll look at it by east council district. We'll look at it in relationship to where our current drop-off locations are and geographically what's best operationally. But we definitely will, are looking at that option going forward, and we do appreciate that input.
And is that something that you would, you would likely do on the off week, or is that something that would just be a constant?
Off week.
An off week. Gotcha. Any other council folks with, with any questions before we proceed to public testimony and public questions? Now, okay, Richard, if you can re-elevate, re-elevate me, I'll go through one by one. Thank you. And if, and if it crashes again, I'll ask Councilman Costello to take over. I guess there's some connectivity issues in the Northwest. So I will go one by one. I'm going to call on each, each person who is in the attendee list and give you the opportunity to, to testify. I will start with Tim McGee. Tim, do you have any testimony? I, I can't, I can't hear you. If you're trying to testify, you can speak up. I can't hear you. Tim, if you're looking to testify, if you can just put in the, in the chat, I will come back to you. But we cannot hear you on the, on the microphone. Next up will be R.A. Mills.
That's why, knowing that it was those two women.
R.A. Mills, would you like to testify? Hello?
Gotcha.
R.A. Mills, would you like to testify? Guess not. All right, next up, James. I know James is with you. James, would you like to say anything?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. You never know who's here on unofficial capacity or is participating on the hearing, so I'll call on everybody. The next up is Timothy Isles, Timothy Lyles. Timothy, do you have any testimony? Timothy, do you have any testimony?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Next person up is Tamiko Bryant.
No.
Do you have any testimony?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Dina Ratner. Dina Ratner, do you have any testimony? Dina Ratner, any testimony? And next up is Carmelita Green. Do you have any testimony? Carmelita Green, do you have any testimony? The next up is Dina Joyce. Dina, do you have any testimony?
Can I?
Got a little echo, but you can go ahead.
I don't have any testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for participating. Okay, Charm TV, no. Chloe Washington, do you have any testimony? Chloe Washington, do you have any testimony? Next up is Anne Haskins. Anne Haskins?
I have no testimony.
Okay, thank you. Ganesh Dahakal? Ganesh Dahakal, any testimony? And if, and if I miss anybody, feel free to just put it in the chat. I'll check the chat before we conclude. The next person up is Slaughter. Slaughter, do you have any testimony?
No testimony.
I know Julie's also with you guys, but Julie, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you, though.
Humphrey Awomolo. Humphrey, do you have any questions or testimony? Okay, thank you. I know Marker's also with you guys, but I'll ask him anyways. Marker, do you have any testimony?
Thank you very much. No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jermaine Bradshaw, do you have any testimony? Guess not.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you. See, the next up is Shakwada. She doesn't have testimony. Next up is Jewel Thornton. Jewel Thornton, do you have any testimony? Next up, also another city, Aaron Moore. Aaron, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Here at the department today, Mr. Chair.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Here at the department today, Mr. Chair. No testimony.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, Anthony Hawkins. Anthony, do you have any testimony? Anthony Hawkins, do you have any testimony? Next up is Eric Riddick. Eric Riddick, do you have any testimony?
No testimony.
Thank you. Next up is Audrey Jones Taylor. Audrey, do you have any testimony?
No, I do not have a testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Keeta Wells, do you have any testimony?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Steve. Steve, do you have any testimony? Steve, do you have any testimony?
No, sir.
Thank you. XTE, do you have any testimony? XTE, do you have any testimony? Guess not. Next up is Dr. Betida M. Scott. Do you have any testimony? Do you have any testimony? Next up is David Wallener. David Wallener, do you have any testimony?
No, sir. Thank you.
Next up is Christopher Irving. Christopher Irving, go ahead.
Yes, hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the council people, and thank you to the leadership of DPW. Obviously, a lot has been covered, and, and just for background sake, I have 15 years' experience in the industry from the bottom up, as well as being a current contractor, president and founder of the Lazarus Right. A lot has been covered. So let, let me just say to, to the council people, I think if you have the opportunity and the ability, go back and watch this meeting again. There were a lot of excellent questions. This meeting, this, this, this meeting was actually very necessary. So thank you to the chair for calling it. And the tone that it began with, obviously, was a little contentious, but it was necessary. This DPW, and in any municipality, the sanitation department is one of the most important partners for a city. This covers a public safety issue. We don't often look at it that way, but it is that. Without trash collection, you can actually experience diseases coming back that had not been seen since the 1800s if the city is large enough. And so for the work that DPW is doing in a time of a pandemic, that is actively changing as we progress through it. Obviously, it, it's a difficult job, and they're still doing it. And so again, understanding that the, the difficulties caused the angst that began the, the meeting the way it did, the meeting is absolutely necessary. Going forward, let, let's remember, as Councilmember Burnett said, he didn't even finish a single shift. And so when you have people doing a shift in, in the size truck that, that amounts to a regular cab pickup truck, and you have three people sitting shoulder to shoulder, when there's the possibility of exposure to a pandemic virus, you can imagine the concern of, am I exposed or not? But not only the actual exposure, just the simple fear. Now we're talking about the mental health issues that were touched on earlier. And so there's a lot that goes into it, and I don't want to belabor the point. But what was stated was empathy for the people who are actually doing the work. And again, as a current contractor, we're experiencing that. We provide both CDL operators as well as labor on the backs of the trucks. When we talk about people on the back, we have to remember that they get to the route in the truck. They sit shoulder to shoulder, three abreast, in that small of an environment, as Councilman Torrance mentioned, is not six feet wide. And again, a number of council people have mentioned several things. I myself, like I said, I provide labor, but when our people are out for whatever reason, I have served in the trucks. I have driven both real load routes as well as being in a tractor trailer, taking stuff down to wherever, wherever it needs to go to from the different sites. So while I'm speaking on this from experience, I'm also speaking on it in a real-time, firsthand knowledgeable capacity. Again, going forward, let's focus the support on DPW that we also focus on the police departments. And, and the reason I compare the two is, again, we don't see them as being that frontline public safety entity, but they absolutely are, not just from aesthetics, but from a public health perspective. Director Mitchell had mentioned a couple of times that he should, that he did not want to answer health-related questions, and I, I understood that. I would have liked to have seen the Health Department on this meeting, but also OSHA, occupational, safe, and healthy. We have to understand the totality of this particular environment. And I also wanted to share a term with everyone on the call, is missed pickups. When you're asking the director or anyone from the agency to let you know ahead of time, that is totally understandable as it relates to the politics of trash. But the business of trash dictates that you don't know what, what missed pickups you have until the end of the day. Because there are things called swing shifts. There are people, you, you're always trying to cover routes in this business, but you don't know when a route ultimately won't be covered until it's not covered. And so again, the question is understandable. Unfortunately, the answer practically is just not available until you're in a predicament where you have to react to not having covered a route. There's a lot more that I would like to say, but I would definitely like to say that we have to look forward, and how do we best support DPW? I've had a number of conversations with the director, who I salute, who came in, he came in running. He meets the people who do the job at the ground level, and he is constantly speaking to them, what do you need? What do you have? How do you assess everything, including my response? And I appreciated that from him. I would ask the council to look at DPW as a possible, if possible, 24-hour operation, seven days a week, much like in New York City. I would ask the council to look at funding DPW in that fashion to include putting snowplows on the front of trucks, much like New York City does. We have to look at DPW as a much more integral agency to the overall operation of Baltimore City and not simply a tangential agency that just does what we need when we need it. They, they are the eyes and ears of the city. They're able to see things that the police don't see because they literally go into every street corner and neighborhood of this city in a way that no other agency does. They are the eyes and ears of the city and possibly partner to every other agency in a way that we sometimes don't discuss. This is the largest agency that employs the most Baltimore City residents. And so there's also an economic component of rebuilding Baltimore City by way of that agency, if we look at them in that way. I would love to make myself available to any of the members of the council. Mr. Mitchell, Chief Moore, you know that I'm available to, to the agency. Again, this meeting was very necessary. To be fair, I feel that meetings like this need to also be called of the Police Department and other large agencies, the Fire Department. How do we help with, again, what, at, at the end of the day, this was a question of what are the needs of the workforce, what is the workforce needs of the agency? All of this is based on the fact that they are so shorthanded, and we're still talking about shorthanded to get back to how things were done as opposed to how do we want them to be done in the future? Upstaffing to a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation in order to get the city to where we want it to be in the future, not just to where we were before. And I'll stop there. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I think you're on mute.
Oh, thank you. The next up is Robin Gee. Robin, would you like to testify?
No, no, thank you.
Next up is Sophia Gerber Watt. Sophia, would you like to testify? The next up is, just on here is JR. JR, would you like to testify?
No testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Last one is a city employee. But I'll give you an opportunity. Kim, would you like to testify?
I'm good. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. I will check the comments real quick. If anybody was trying to testify and didn't get an opportunity, I'll call on your name. I'm calling you now. Hold on. Just make sure we didn't miss anybody. After waiting this long, everybody should get a chance. It looks like no others. Any other council people have any, anything else they'd like to add before we conclude this hearing? Seeing none, first off, Director and your leadership team, I do want to thank you for showing up tonight. That is a critical first step in us getting through, getting through this, this situation that we've all been dealing with. I'm sure you've heard our frustrations loud and clear. I also want to thank you personally for picking up the phone each time I've called. And I know I've probably called you, you know, 20 times in the past few days, but I appreciate that you take the call no matter time of day or night. That, that is, that is important, and that means a lot. And, you know, I'm, I'm, as I said in my, in the beginning, I'm a fierce advocate for my constituents. And my constituents, I've never seen them so frustrated. And, and just to clarify, and I know I've said it a few times, that has zero to do with a missed collection. Everybody understands missed collections. It is exclusively on when they find that out. And then when we relay messages to them, and then it doesn't happen, that frustration grows. And, you know, council people are in a unique position where we are the credible messenger. And so we are an integral part of communicating between city agencies and And so we are an integral part of communicating between city agencies and the citizens. You know, we're out there where the rubber meets the road. And when we tell our constituents something and then it doesn't happen, it comes back to us and then we lose that credibility. And so I know this has been a tough week for all of us and I see there's some efforts on this, on this new calendar. I will, I personally will be supportive of that. And I do want to just stress that we have to look at this data and we have to look at the comings and goings of, you know, on all levels just to make sure that we are operating as efficiently as possible and that we're following the most up-to-date COVID protocols in particular because that makes a big difference on when people return to work. And with that being said, I see Councilman Costello just came back. If you have any last things, we're about to close out. Nope. All right, so with that being said, we will be closing out this hearing. I will send you a follow-up email with follow-up questions and we all look forward to working together to get these collections back on track. Thank you.